Okay, so welcome everyone to the just January sixteenth twenty twenty four Planning Board meeting. We are being recorded via Wind Cam. Hi Wind Cam. Thank you as well as over Zoom. If you do not wish to appear on the recordings, please turn off your video and your microphone. Most of today's meeting is set aside to discuss the three MBTA three A. Overlay zoning districts, and I'm looking at the wrong agenda. But we are going to start off with some updates. And some meeting minutes approval, so.
We actually don't have half minutes. It didn't make it into the final, so we'll be doing them on the twenty third.
Okay, so we will, we will push that off. And so what are updates? The big update, I think, from last week is that. It's the for the waterfield lot, the not all of our consultants have submitted their final. Reports and they will not, in particular, the stormwater report will not be done by our next meeting on the twenty fourth. So we will not be able to vote on the twenty fourth without hearing from those consultants and from engineering. And the reply, et cetera. So we're still going to have a meeting on the twenty fourth to discuss. The two consultants we will have reports on which are. Traffic from tool and design from Carlon, and then we are going to be. Meeting on the third to hear the last report, which is the Wesley Sampson.
I think you mean the twenty, you you mean the twenty third, right? Not the twenty fourth?
Yeah, it'll be the twenty third and February sixth.
Thank you. So it would be the twenty third, my apologies, and February the sixth. We would be meeting to make a decision on the waterfield lot. And my apologies this evening, I am recovering from a headache, so my brain is mush. So thank you for the corrections. Much appreciated. Any other updates? That any members of the board want to Sally has her hand raised?
I I have one update for the board, which is that, as as I think. Most of you, if not all of you already know, I will not be renewing or pulling papers to be reelected to the planning board. I'm at the end of my third year of my first term. So I wanted to let you know that if you know anybody who wants to run for the planning board, I believe that the deadline to pull and return papers is. Very soon, maybe the last day of January, not really sure.
February second.
Thank you, Taylor. Thank you.
Hear that, but your efforts have been so heroic over the last year. I can understand.
That's very kind, Carrie. Thank you.
That's a bummer.
Yeah, it's it's a sad sad to see you go Sally. It's really been. Well, we we have you for a few more, few more sections, right?
You you have me full court press through the election.
So I will join in. I I will say it's sad to see you go, but I'm happy to see you go because I know that you will get some much needed rest. So, but yeah, we still got you for another couple of months, so. Let's see. Taylor, do we have any? More updates on our public outreach meetings for three A? I know we we kind of the ball slipped. We lost the ball. I forget what the idiom is.
We will be having, you know, we'll be having a public meeting next Wednesday. That that posting and agenda goes out tomorrow morning, so. We'll be having an in person public meeting next Wednesday, January twenty fourth. In Town Hall. In the Winchester room. And it will be an opportunity at seven P M. Seven P M. You'll see it on on the town calendar tomorrow morning. Or tomorrow afternoon by the latest. It will be an opportunity to see more detail on all selected districts. So the the board will be selecting their districts tonight. You'll be able to come in tomorrow and you'll see. More detail on each individual district, and then we'll also start talking from a community standpoint about. Development standards, which are design guidelines, dimensional guidelines, uses. We'll be using the public meeting next week to to kick that off. And we'll also be scheduling another Z rec meeting. Z rec members who are here, thank you for sending me your availability. We'll be working. Through that to get that scheduled over the next two weeks. Some point over the next two weeks.
And for those listening in who don't know what Z rec means, comma Taylor.
Zoning Review Advisory Committee, a group of ten Winchester residents. Who were. Who are volunteering to help the planning board, to help inform the planning board of the community decisions for which districts. Should be used in MBTA Multifamilies Community Act.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further updates. We can dive into the main business of this meeting. So we are about. We're in the second meeting of where we're deciding what the overlay districts to be included in our MBTA. Three A zoning will be. I think that's good English. Last week we discussed. The. Glenn. I'm sorry, some people want to take over. My brain is still. The Gin, the Gin Road.
Right.
Yes, the Gin Road neighborhood. The two parcels north of which pond. And the parcel which included Saint Mary's on Mount Vernon. Or no way is that? No, that's on Washington Street, isn't it?
Yep.
And then a couple of parcels across Washington Street, we had to add in order to bring it. In order that it be brought to a minimum five acres because it was not contiguous to the downtown areas. So what Taylor, you had a. Presentation that you had last week and also did you? Did you make another one for this week? I don't recall.
Yep, I have an updated presentation that I can go through. Just wanted to bring your attention, Dia, that we do have. Have counsel here, so. So when you have questions about specific things. We have that opportunity.
Yes, my screen is overwhelmed with squares. Can counsel unmute themselves and answer they are?
You want to share Adam Costa here before you can see him?
Oh, there you are. Yes, thank you, Adam Costa. Pleased to have you at a planning board meetings. I saw you once at a select board meeting, I believe, or did I get that wrong?
You know, I think I already wanted to send for many and we may get a Z B A meetings, but it's.
Oh, it's Z B A. Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. Welcome.
I I do want to say that it's very echoey, your your sound quality, so I'm not sure what you adjustments you might make, but it's great to see you here. Thank you for coming.
I appreciate you talking about. I'll see if I can make some fixes.
Right, yeah, we we are definitely going to have some questions upon on historical preservation. And and how it fits in with the three A overlay or the three A zoning. So we will get to that probably fairly shortly. We have the other three districts, I believe, that we are concerned about that we didn't discuss last week. Are the G B D three, G B D two and the C B D. We 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 added Parkview to our list. And we added. We added Gin and.
No, we just added North Wedge Pond and Parkview. We selected Parkview. How how would I go through the presentation and?
Yeah, sorry, take it over, take it over, please.
So I'm going to give a. A recap of. Of last week, along with some. Some other details, so. To remind everyone about the about the requirements. We have to reach a minimum density of fifteen dwelling acre dwelling units per acre. Minimum of thirty seven acres. That's the important part for tonight. Minimum unit capacity of one thousand two hundred and twenty dwelling units and fifty percent of both that land unit, land area and unit capacity have to be within a half mile radius of the train station. Just like last week, tonight, the planning board is just voting on. On the required land area. We're not voting on compliance metrics like density or capacity, dimensional requirements or design. Obviously, those are considerations, but we're but tonight we're really just voting on which districts are going to be included and where are those districts? So last week we had, we started with eight options, Central Business District, General Business District, two and three, Parkview, North Wedge Pond, Saint Mary's, Gin Road and Mahoney's Benel. I want to make a few corrections from last week. Thank you for the members of the community who have stepped up to 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 correct me. About some of some of these things. The first is Northwest Northwest Pond in the district options. Graph or a table, Northwest Pond was inaccurately stated as nineteen point seven acres. And when the plan, when the planning board voted. It was inaccurately noted as six point one acres. North Wedge Pond is in fact seven point seven acres. This this was this mistake was happened because we did not include the excluded land, which does count towards your land area. And because the planning board. Did vote based on that six point one acres, I would suggest that the planning board vote again based off of the seven point seven acres, if possible. For General Business District two and General Business District three. You'll see that there have been small updates, parcel updates, some parcels have been removed, some parcels have been have been added. This increases the the accuracy of 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 the maps. I do want to make a note to to everyone that no planning board decisions were just were decided based off of these these accuracies. And last and lastly. Zoning Review Advisory Committee, there were three instances of Z rec members feedback being incorrectly calculated, and that has been corrected. It should be noted that in the presentation that all of the. Inaccuracies has been called out in the presentation and will be uploaded online so that you can see where the inaccuracies are and how they are corrected in this in this presentation. So the two approved districts currently Northwest Pond, I still suggest that we revoke but Northwest Pond. And Parkview and the districts that we decided to exclude are Mahoney's and Benel. That meet that leaves four districts still under consideration, the C B D, G B D two and three, Saint Mary's and Gin Road. As I stated before, not all districts had excluded land included, so you may see different numbers than than we saw last week. The numbers that you'll see tonight are more accurate than they were last week. So I want to make that clear. So we'll start with the Central Business District. We have. We have four options now. We 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 added another option over the last. Over the last week, these options range from twenty four point two five acres to eleven point four three acres. The first option, which encompasses the entire C B D, twenty four point two five acres. This is the largest that 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 we can get. One of ten Z rec members voted in favor of this. Of this. Option. Option number two. I would also consider this another maximized area, however, it is. The removal of some downtown historical buildings and structures and ground, ground reef, ground floor retail, but the inclusion of the church in the adjacent Dick Street. Parcel. This is twenty one point eight two acres and one of ten members of the C rec supported this. Option number three is. An option, an overlay option that. Stays to the North Core and the Museum Districts, eighty percent of all historical structures downtown. And all ground floor retail not located on North Main Street are preserved. This area is thirteen point three seven acres and six of ten. Z rec members are in favor of this. And option number four. This is the smallest that we can get. For for the C B D, ninety percent of all, but option number three was eighty percent. This is ninety percent of all historic structures and ground. Have been preserved. All ground floor retail not located on the on Main Street has been preserved. This is eleven point four three acres. Two of ten members of the Z rec have supported us. The big change here is the removal of the. Of the parcels on the museum side. So together you have four options ranging from twenty four point two five acres to eleven point four three acres. And when we talk about CBD, we'll go back into these. For G B D two and three, we've combined it into one long district to hopefully help out with 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 simplicity. Each each parcel, when we make this decision, I'll pull up a larger map so we can see it in more detail. But each district has an area within the half mile and and outside of the half mile. The thing to note is that the green and red districts. For G B D two, some of it are some of it is in, but also some of it is 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 out. And we'll go through each one of them in more detail as we have the conversation about G B D. So in total, if we take the minimum required, so that was option number four for the C B D. We take the the minimum required for G B D two, and we take the already approved North Northwest Pond and Parkview. That totals thirty eight point four seven acres, twenty six point six three of that being within the half mile radius. That complies to MBTA three A. So currently with the with the least amount of. Without considering any other options and using the smallest possible C B D and the smallest possible G B D two, we do comply. It is very close. The total that that we have to comply to is thirty seven acres. This as modeled is thirty eight point four seven. I would say that's a little too close for comfort. But. By our G I S modeling, we we do comply. So the two, the two additional parcels or di- districts that we have to that we have to consider are Saint Mary's. Saint Mary's. Option one, as presented last week, is six point one seven acres. This includes all Saint Mary's parcels and the general business one across the street. There have, there has been a suggestion by several members of the community to rearrange this. District to be option number two, which still complies at five point two three acres. This does not cross the street. It does not include the church building itself. And it does not include G B D one buildings. As well.
That's great, Taylor.
But 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 it but just point of clarification, but it is including a budding residential.
Is that correct? Includes six currently, yes, six residential buildings here. We'll we'll talk about it in more detail as we.
Okay, good. Thanks.
And the last here is is Gin Road. We have two options now. The first option, as seen last week and before, option number one. Twelve point nine acres at a hun- hundred percent of that being within the transit area, six of ten members of the Z rec support this. And the second option, based off of community feedback within the last week, is the removal of the historic carriage house, which brings this down to twelve point two five acres. Otherwise, it remain, the district remains the same.
Great.
So the last thing here is I have this slide that if it helps us, I know that this is a PDF, so I can't change it while we're talking, but. I'll be taking notes and try to like putting this in. In the background, so. Hopefully, we can do the calculations together because there's a lot of math here. And we all kind of need to check it. Check each other on it, but I I've set aside something on my other screens that I can try to do that math the best I possibly can while we're all talking. Okay, so we'll go back to which one, which one do we want to start with?
So one, one point that I want to raise in regards to including the museum district in the C B D district. Is that I think most of those parcels are going to run into the Wetland Protections Act. Just for that museum part.
There there. So the question I have is, will it impact their development or not?
I I I would not try and build on the waterfront in this town right now. I was on ComCom for a controversial period of time, so I may be biased, but you will, you, I think. In that we are expecting to build larger buildings, I think being on some of these, I I did a bit, I spent a bit of time with the map. Some of these. Are outside, I think, the two hundred foot, so I think that would be fine, but some of these are are well within the hundred foot. I mean, maybe forty feet. At the corner of the building, so it would be giving up. Giving up pervious surface and building a large building and sort of it it would become. It would become. A kind of a an ecosystem of its own to move a parcel. I mean, we're seeing that with ten Congress plays. I'm just, I just want to point out that a number of those parcels. Would probably be challenging to build that close to the Abner Jonah.
So Taylor, can you remind us what the height of buildings in that parcel is right now in terms of what it could be developed as?
It's not the height, it's the impervious surface and the runoff and the.
Right.
Would, I mean, would protecting some of the historic structures that are closer to the water. Alleviate the problem while leaving the structures that are already very tall, such as the medical building and the condo? Or or would they all? Fall under that?
Well.
I think the parcel gets to, it seems like it's only a couple of acres, so I I think if we start removing. Parcels that may be too small. I don't I don't know, Taylor, you you got a C R council or whoever, but I I was looking at it and thinking all of these are going to trigger. Wetlands Protection.
I mean, don't we get to include the police station, even though it's not going to get developed?
We can include it as it, we can include it as area.
Okay, but we have, I guess we have areas, so.
Well, I I I think I'm, one of the questions I have for Taylor is how close again are we to within? The the minimum required for the within the transit area?
About an acre. Acre and a half.
Yeah, that scares me. Because if the if the state decides that some of the parcels. We want can't be included, we need to come up with area elsewhere, so.
That's why I'm bringing it up because.
But but the ComCom, but I mean, the key thing for us in this decision is if it's this. We're not really changing the development potential of those areas in the sense that they're already developable as much as they are. And so I'm not as and and we are not driven by, the state has not mandated us. To provide maps which. We don't have any, we don't have. We don't have to go through the ComCom review to determine whether this parcel is is available to us or not for this exercise.
I know, but you know what I'm saying, thinking logically through like, will we actually be able to create more housing on this parcel? I think it's worth thinking about. It's also worth thinking in terms of, are we doing a good job of protecting the Abner Jonah? And it could be a better, it could be a better idea to do this because it could sort of put, you know, put projects in front of us in a different way, but I'm just saying, we want to think about that. I'm just bringing it up. It was a big issue.
No, I I understand. I'm just, I would love to be able to include the police, the public safety building and part of our area, but we really can't do that unless we make it contiguous with other sections.
Or could we use the medical building to make it contiguous?
Before we get so deep in the weeds here, can we maybe work on G B D two? It seems like that one is would be easier to figure out than getting into the C B D right now.
I just want that number to be out there before we move on.
So maybe we should.
G B D two and three, I think we should look at because those numbers seem I'm way off on those. In terms of support from the, seems like that scenario is a lot of support.
Right.
Something to note, something to note about the G B D two and three is that the area. Down here on the south end, this is included, all the area that's hashed is. Is not included. I'm going to do my best to show you two things at once, but we'll we'll take a look at at this and then we'll go to a larger map so that we can play with it. But. This is. This is the. The land area, the total land area for all of the. For all of the the districts, and if you look at the Z rec support, there there's pretty big support up through the whole. The whole. The whole district. I I I will, I will note, I didn't write it down anywhere, but I will note that this orange area. Is still technically a part, not technically, it is a part of G B D two. And with the inclusion of this, we get an extra of one point seven seven acres that. Adds a adds a pretty good buffer while not adding any other new districts. We just take the whole. G B D two instead of segmenting it and then making and then giving us ourselves a whole almost. Three and a quarter. Acre buffer.
Outside, that's for outside, though, right?
It is for outside, but we have, but we do comply with. With way with our half right now.
So Taylor, how did you get to three and a quarter? The only part that's outside the half mile radius from the town. Center, the the train station is the orange and the orange is only one point seven, I'm one, one point seven seven.
Yeah, we have, we have an additional one point five from. You let, let's just say we go with the smallest C B D model. We have an additional one point five available.
Oh, I see. So it takes us that farther over. The the minimum of thirty seven. It brings us up to three. Acres over the thirty seven acres is what you're saying.
Yeah, is that, is that thirty eight? It's not including Gin and not including Saint Mary's.
That's correct. That's correct.
So I think that, so. I think it's it's a, it's a fairly easy. Add for to add the east side of G B D two. That's the green. Did I get east correct? Yes.
Yes.
So that would be the green and note that the upper green is actually Bellino Park, which we would, which you can include for area, but we would not be building on.
That's right.
I don't. So I think that one's pretty straightforward.
Are we, are we missing any important? Historic buildings on that side of the street?
So so what I'm aware of is historic structures in the green is the cluster and maybe Taylor can zoom to. A more detailed map of. East Green. Give me, give me one second.
They were, they were done by.
There's, I think there's four or five. Small houses that whose backyards back up to the Parkview. At least one or more, I think possibly all might be deemed historic. And they they do define a particular character for that. Lower half of the upper green, you know, between Bellino Park. And what I I don't know what's, it's the. Other commercial things that are there.
So I I I think, you know, at some point we have to, you know, speak to the gorilla or the elephant in the room, which is that. Not putting them in. The overlay districts does not actually give them any more protection than they're if they're in the overlay districts or vice versa. So excluding certain.
Isn't there a demolition delay?
There's a demolition.
With with three A.
No, no, there would still be a demolition delay, even if for three A.
I thought we weren't allowed to have demolition delays for three A.
I believe we can, and why don't we turn to town council? Because I think we need to, we need to discuss this. The historical buildings, we have to understand what exactly is is our options.
My understanding is with all. I think we're at the point where we can start to kind of carve out and and do the detail work that we that we. You know, right now we're just doing broad brushes, right? I I think that now we can, we can save the last building, as it were. And we're at the point where we, you know, where we know we're going to make the the area where if we add Gin and depending on how we do with Saint Mary's, we're easily going to be way over the area. So I think now we have the opportunity to kind of carve out. The Sakura Building, the professional building on the end of Canal. And the buildings that really contribute to the character of the town.
So so.
So I don't even know what buildings you're talking about.
So so first of all, we have not voted on Gin and. So, so first of all, we have not voted on gin and we have not voted on St. Mary's. So I don't think, I think it's a little premature to say that we have that extra. And we can now go up to GBD three and do similar sort of excisions. Because if you excise the the his, the small historical buildings that you're concerned about, you have essentially taken out the entire of that east, top east side of GBD two.
That's right. That's exactly right.
So can we hear from council about demolition delay?
Yeah, I would love to hear from council as to what our, what our options are for historical preservation and whether the demo delay, which is actually a town bylaw, not a zoning bylaw. It's very, it's, it's a different set of rules.
Oh, no.
We're still hearing you warble.
Maybe mute the meeting? Are we hearing you and us? But I don't know.
Now you're. You're on mute now.
I think you might have two mics operating at once.
Or zero.
Well, if he's muted, he's on zero, yeah.
All or nothing, right?
We, we can continue to have a conversation while we wait.
I mean, I, I, I don't think that we should write off. I, I thought that we were just about ready to do gin.
Why don't we, while, while Mr. Costa gets his, his technical stuff working, we can, we can go and talk about gin if we want to, or we can. I mean, I think gin and, and St. Mary's, we, we sort of set them aside and said, yeah, those are great opportunities. But we never actually accepted them into the overlay district, so. Does the board feel like?
Is this a ti- a time for each of us to say what we think is the pros and cons of either of those proposed or potential districts?
We could certainly do that. We could ask for a motion and have a second and then discuss the motion, which would be an appropriate place to have that discussion.
We, we could. Yeah, wow.
Adam, how are you doing with your mic?
Well, I guess that's a question more for you.
Got it. Perfect.
Okay, there we go.
So, so I think, I think what would help the board most is to talk about what the existing historical protections are, in particular in the CBD. Um, what historical protections would be acceptable under three A? And then um where does the town's twelve month demolition delay fit into those, seeing as it's not part of the zoning bylaw, it's part of the general bylaws?
Right. So let me, uh, let me get, I guess, preface some of my comments by telling you what I suspect you already know, which is that three A uh is and has been and probably will continue to be, at least in the short term, uh somewhat of a moving target for us attorneys who are dealing with it really on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis. Um, the, the, the statute was adopted, that was followed by some preliminary guidance documents from EOHLC, uh that was followed by more comprehensive guidance documents. And now we're at a stage where as municipalities are creating these three A districts, they're being submitted and they're being evaluated and analyzed and appined on on a case-by-case basis um by, by EOHLC and by the Attorney General's Office. And I've, I've had numerous conversations with uh staff, not only at EOHLC, but also the three attorneys who uh work in the municipal law unit at the Attorney's General's Office, whose responsibility it is to review these bylaws when they're adopted by Massachusetts towns and to either approve them or reject them, uh prove them with comments or cautions. Um, and as a result of all of those conversations, I, I can say what I said a moment ago, which is that or there, there's a bit of uncertainty associated with three A. So I can tell you what we know. I can tell you that we know by reading the guidance documents and by referring back to the statute, that the statute discusses as-of-right development within these three A districts. And we have a sense of what as-of-right development is because we've known that terminology for the better part of forty years in the context of Massachusetts zoning and how you compare as-of-right development uh with discretionary development. So uh your, your board is certainly familiar with variances and special permits and comprehensive permits and the sorts of discretionary approvals that you can grant on a case-by-case basis as you see fit, either to allow a development to proceed or not. And as-of-right development is of course the exact opposite of that. And what many municipalities use to um control as-of-right development is site plan review. And that's a, a process that planning boards use in some communities like yours, the zoning board of appeals uses it. And site plan review is a, not a creature of statute, it's a creature of the courts. Uh, you can read all of chapter forty eight, the zoning act from start to finish. You won't find a single reference to site plan review because site plan review is a non-discretionary tool that has been created by municipalities, but it is tried and true. It's been used across the state for decades. It has been reviewed by the courts and the courts have said that it's a permissible tool so long as, because it's not statutorily authorized, so long as it's not being used um to exercise the same sort of discretion that you would be, you would be exercising for special permits or variances or other types of discretionary relief. So we know this concept of as-of-right development. It's the site plan review type development. And that's what the state expects us to apply to these three A districts. And so when we look to the guidance documents under three A, it talks about uh the, the restrictions can't delay a project or impose conditions that make a project infeasible or impractical to proceed with. Um, that's the concept of as-of-right development versus discretionary development. But there's also a dichotomy. There's a difference between zoning controls and exercising zoning authority that you're not supposed to be exercising for as-of-right development because it's supposed to be by right. And other sorts of land use controls, whether they're wetlands protection, which is something I heard referenced about five minutes ago, whether they're uh historic preservation, which is something authorized by a different statute or under the common law, when you adopt demolition delays to provide additional protection uh to, to uh historically um uh prevalent uh sites or, or properties, significant sites or properties. Um, those sorts of protections are outside the, the, the realm of zoning. They're governed by, by different statutes in some cases or as I said, in, in other instances by the common law. So the question that we're left with is, okay, well, is, is EOHLC, is the Attorney General's Office, is the state going to step in and say, well, you've met your burden under three A from a zoning perspective and you've done what you're obligated to do by performing this mathematical exercise that you, I've already heard referenced a few times tonight and crafting districts that meet the minimum size requirements and providing for zoning bylaw provisions that allow certain styles of development at a certain density with certain dimensional controls. So you've checked all those boxes, but practically speaking, development can't occur because you have this historic protection or you have this protection of conservation interests or whatever else the case may be. And, and I think the answer to that question, at least based upon all the guidance that is available, is, is no. In fact, if you, if you look, and I had it open my screen a moment ago, if you if you actually look to the, the document on the EOHLC website for uh MBTA communities, they have a specific document that is called what is as-of-right zoning? In fact, if you, if you scroll through their site, they have three A fact sheets and they have one that says, you know, what is unit capacity? What is reasonable size? What is gross density? Well, one of the topics is what is as-of-right zoning? And when it explains as-of-right zoning and why it's important, it says that by requiring multifamily housing as-of-right, the objective of three A is to remove some of the zoning barriers to this, the, this style of development. But then the very next sentence says other barriers may remain. However, zoning restrictions may cease to be the limiting factor for new housing in three A compliant districts. So at least as we, as we sit or stand here today, what we know is that what EOHLC has said, what the state has said, and, and what its own guidance documents published on its website say, is that the focus of the program is to ensure that the zoning barriers go away within these three A compliant districts. And you're providing for this minimum density, you're providing for um the opportunity to, to develop multifamily housing as-of-right without a sort of discretionary special permit or a comprehensive permit required to achieve it. But to the extent that there are other non-zoning controls that are on the books or that for that matter are developed in the future, things like demolition delay or things like um the State Wetlands Protection Act or even local wetlands rules and regulations or a local bylaw. Those, tho- those restrictions, those controls still stand. Those aren't governed by uh three A because three A is a provision within the zoning act and the focus of three A therefore is on zoning controls. That's the extent of its reach.
So that, thank you very much. That, that does clarify a lot. So in our, in Winchester's particular case of a demolition delay, which is in the town's general bylaws, that will stand outs- outside of our zoning work. And so that will always be applicable.
All right, I, I, I didn't read that necessarily from what he said. I think that uh, I, I, I don't think that we can rely on the three A protections. Uh, I, I think there's enough uncertainty that I, that I think we need to just protect the buildings uh by keeping them out. I don't, um, I, I don't see, and I, and I think, I think we've done that.
So it's only, it's only possible to do that, Nick, if you can do it without losing all of your compliance calculation levels. And if you can do it without severing contiguity so that we can make legally formulated districts.
Right, I understand that. So it may be that some buildings can't be saved because we need the land, but I, I think that we basically have to say that um if, if they're not excluded, they're, they're gone. I mean, I, I don't think that, that we can rely on any, uh, you know, by right protections.
Well, I'd like to introduce the notion of adaptive reuse and the opportunity to encourage that in our development standards or whatever. Um, but other than that, Nick, that's right.
Yeah, no.
I think, I think we, we, so uh Nick, you and I have a disagreement on opinion of what Mr. Costa just said. So I would really like to hear Mr. Costa address your concerns about you know, the zoning versus non-zoning.
So, so, so I can. You're asking him to defend your position.
No, I'm asking him, my position, I.
I mean, I think, I think that he said that there's uncertainty and that I don't think we should rely on uh the um protections that, that may or may not be able to be enforced, uh, you know, to protect the historic buildings.
I believe that the letter of the law as it's written and which I believe as Mr. Costa has presented is that MBTA three A is a zoning act and only applies to zoning. If the state were to change its rules, it would have to change it so that it would also have to apply to general bylaws.
Right, but even the, but I guess what I'm saying is that the twelve-month demolition delay is not sufficient to protect the building. I mean, particularly uh with, with these developments. Uh, and uh, so I, I think that you need special permit to protect certain buildings. I think that gives the community a lot more control.
So you can't, you can't use special permits in, in this three A district.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying that, that some buildings ought to be excluded. I, I think that's what we're doing. I, I, I don't know that we're, I, I, I don't know that we're not. Um, most of the historic buildings have been excluded.
Yeah, and you can't exclude a building if it's going to break the whole compliance model by lack of contiguity or lack of land area or.
Right, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opposing that. I understand that. I think that I'm.
So that's why sometimes they have to be included. And and I also heard Adam say that one of the standards of the state is that the zoning bylaws not impose any um delay mechanisms. Is that right, Adam?
That's correct. No unreasonable delay.
But if a town bylaw imposes a protective delay, um, that is outside of three A. Right? And so has. Let me just ask Nick, uh, ask Adam. Has the state addressed this question of whether demo delay constitutes um an allowable delay in development?
So not to my knowledge, directly. I think that they have indirectly addressed the question by acknowledging in their own guidance documents that there are other barriers to development, non-zoning barriers to development that are not addressed by three A. And, and I guess I will say this, and I don't think this is taking sides with anybody that's spoken or taking one position or another position. Um, I can appreciate both, both sides of the coin, so to speak. I recognize that if you have specific properties that are historic properties and you have a concern about the reuse of those properties, properties where you don't believe that there can be or there should be an adaptive reuse of the property. While I would tell you on the one hand that per the plain language of three A and the three A guidance documents, that there is nothing that prevents you from utilizing, let's say, a demolition delay bylaw to provide protection. I would also acknowledge that by virtue of rezoning it within a three A zoning district or overlay district, the objective of these districts is to intent incentivize these particular properties, the properties within these districts for redevelopment for multifamily housing. So you are offering a bit of an incentive. And as we all know, while demolition delays are meant to act as a disincentive to tear down what would otherwise be historically significant structures, they simply do that and nothing more than that. They impose a delay. And if you run into a developer that is willing to wait out the delay, in many circumstances, they end up with exactly what they wanted because they were able to wait it out. And so I, I can appreciate that there may be some properties that are historic, that are appropriate for adaptive reuse. And you may benefit from including those as a community within the three A zoning district. But if there are properties that you have significant concerns, might be reused and you would prefer that they stay in their current state and that you maintain all the discretion you'd like to have, well, then those might be sites that would more appropriately be left out of a three A overlay or a three A district.
So, so for those four houses, how would you, how would adaptive reuse as a tool be, be used to uh, to, I guess make, make those houses be adaptively reused as opposed to tearing them down?
These are very small houses.
Tool that we would use in, in this case. Uh, and you know, at, at the end of the day, you know, there, there are going to be some buildings, you know, that we can't save. I mean, but I just, I, Sally brought up adaptive reuse and I'm, I'm just wondering how that works and how does that?
Well, with adaptive reuse, what happens in I Ching as an architect can speak more to it than I can, but generally the concept is from a, the conceptual thing is you keep the look of the building, but you perhaps add around it or you connect multiple historic buildings. You'll see this happen.
How, how do you legally enforce that? Is that, is that something? Can you enforce that under three A?
It sounds like that's a part of the site review process. It sounds like we would, we would encourage adaptive reuse when we have our opportunity to do a site review. But, but the concern is that they could just turn it out and they have to be allowed to put multi-family up.
Right, I mean, at the end of the day, they're going to do what they, what they want to do.
But I, I still think if we have, if we have design guidelines, I mean, you know, you have to think sort of like, okay, so we're going to do what we can with three A and then what would happen otherwise? Like St. Mary's is a good example, right? Where we would hope the church would be an example of adaptive reuse, where we would hope housing would get put in the original building. And we would keep this beautiful structure, but also welcome new people to the community. But if we don't put it into this, you know, would St. Mary's sell it to a developer who would put up a forty B or who would, you know, sort of sidestep it in a different way?
Right, and, and, and in fact, they're actually looking, we've actually looked at alternate properties. And one of the, one of the ZAC members looked at alternate properties that exclude the church and the funeral homes, so those don't need to be included.
Right, so, so the, the point is that, that uh, one of the models that we did for the CBD is. Uh, one of the models that we did for the CBD is the lowest acreage model. Excludes all but two historic buildings, okay? And as you go up from Skilling's Road up towards Bellino Park, um, the. It's basically only sadly, but it's only gratefully, but sadly, only five small houses. And the fact is that for the larger benefit to the town. And to the Commonwealth, you have to think about the pluses and minuses. The, the two large buildings that are in the center that are historic, that are in the currently proposed lowest acreage model for the CBD. To me, they, it it doesn't seem likely that they would be torn down, they're very easy to adaptively reuse to, to adapt to be a housing structure. And there are creative ways to adaptively reuse a row of five. Historic homes if somebody is willing to do it and turn it into five or seven or ten. Multi-family residences in a small aggregated property that maintains the look and feel of the buildings. It happens all over the country. So you can't, you can't.
I guess, yeah.
You just can't, you can't, you can't throw out the baby with the bathwater. That's a classic example of this. If you were to. To stop the train, its tracks.
Right, if we, if we need to, if we need to include those four, you know, the houses to to get the rest of the land, then I, you know. That that certainly would be a uh, um, you know, a consideration.
Right, and so you have to.
But, but on the other side, I think that once we do that, we have to say. Okay, you know, I I I I think that there's a really good chance that that those houses will be torn down. I mean, I think we just have to be realistic.
I don't think that we should say one way or another because, because it's totally market driven. And somebody would come in with a model that they can make financially viable. That might not involve that. It's not a foregone conclusion.
Well, uh.
I, I think there are, there are enough, I think there are, there have been enough incentives for. If you go up North Main Street and you look at just a handful of structures that have been built according to the existing zoning. Uh, there's no reason why those four lots couldn't have already been developed. So I don't know that putting in this extra, you know, so we've seen. You know, the, the zoning along that stretch requires that you have, if you want to build four residential, you have to put in a commercial unit on the ground floor. And that's been done in at least two places. And on that side, I think the size of the lots and the, the topo- the topography of the lots have made it much more difficult to develop. And so there has already been opportunity for those four buildings to get raised and rebuilt. And it hasn't happened because the economics don't make sense for the lots. Now, does the, putting them into a multifamily by right, does that change the economics? I don't know. I would, I would, I would say probably not because it's really the difference between. Putting in a commercial on the first floor or residential. It does bring in more money. But you still have to deal with the difficulty of developing on those lots. They're really hard to develop. They're just, so I don't, you know, there are. My, I am, I don't, yeah, so.
I guess the question, the question for me is, do, do, do they prevent? Does the exclusion of those prevent us from using? The, the, the land that's above them on the map?
It, it, I think it would unless we, well, perhaps we could um use them crossing over Main Street.
But we would lose all the acreage in Bellino Park, which is helping us.
I think there's, so Taylor, can you please put up the um?
Before you do that though, Dia, I feel like you answered that question in that. I mean, i- is it any change to exclude it than to include it? I, the, the underlying zoning right now incentivizes folks to do exactly what. We're trying to do with MBTA three A right now. They have the right to wait twelve, uh, twelve months. Demolish and build up to, I don't know what the existing zoning is, but they, they could do it. So excluding it doesn't take that part away. There's already an underlying zoning that incentivizes them to do that next, so. What's the point except to make it harder for us to comply, but also increasing the density? And in the CBD or other parts that are going to be voted in, right? If we exclude that.
That's a very good point, I Ching, it, it puts.
I'm not sure we need to do this exercise of trying to move it across the street. If, if the underlying zoning already exists to match MBTA three A actually. This tortuous way of uh uh exercising or properties. That we're spending so much time on when there, there's a lot of work ahead of us to do, I think, right? It doesn't change the actual outcome here.
I, you know, I feel that. We, we had maps of this area when we worked with Form and Place that, that uh set aside certain historic properties.
It identified them. It didn't set them aside. It identified.
It identified them. Uh, and now I, you know, now I don't know, I, I, I am looking at this and I think that. First of all, the, the building that we came before us, where Sakura Restaurant is. Uh, is one building that we might consider uh excluding. And there is another, I think there's a professional building that's uh. A man's or uh.
So here's the thing, here's the thing, we, we need to look at the. Shape and contiguity and size of. Three A districts where we, Nick, would be able to overlay the as of right multifamily, okay? And we're gonna, we're gonna do it in a way that works. But to jump around and, and, and exclude specific buildings when you're trying to maintain continuity. Will, as I said earlier, make more difficult or put more pressure on the CBD. Um, to make the models work because of the acreage and the contiguity. You understand?
I would. I just want to note that a demo permit has been delayed, has been pulled for the Sakura building and it's already passed, it's, it's already passed the one year. So the, the putting, putting the Sakura in or out of the three A district doesn't change what's going to happen to it. But I would actually like to move forward a little further in this. And I would like us, if we're going to look at this, rather than going back to Gin and Saint Mary's, and I would, and. I would ask, since apparently I can't ask for, I can't move myself, I would ask someone to move that the green area. And the pink and orange areas both be included in the three A zone.
I, I would move to include the green east one. And the red west one. Um, west two. Into the MBTA three A overlay district.
And is there a second on that?
So Dia, I, I wanted to discuss something about it, but, um, but can I not do that if I don't second?
Uh, if, if this motion does not get seconded, it dies.
And we can continue discussion?
We can, we can continue discussion, we can bring the same motion back again. But I'm guessing if no one is seconding this motion, then. People aren't happy with the inclusion of the, the two sides of North Main Street up to Skilling's. Or I'm sorry, up to Swanton.
I would, I would make a motion that we incorporate into the MBT three A. Districts, the red and the green, with further discussion required for the orange and the brown. Or any of the other colors.
So brown is, is that the one that's in the GBD three? Is that the one you're talking about north of?
I, I think it's brown. Yeah, it says brown west three, yeah.
So why don't we just concentrate on GBD two? And so you would like to amend the motion, which hasn't actually been seconded.
I would like to amend the motion to include not even all of GBD two right now. Because I think we want further discussion to clarify for ourselves and our community, what. Development standards would be in place if we include. Well, if, for any of them, and particularly when you include. A proposed three eight district or subdistrict that backs up to residential.
Okay, so I Ching, I don't know what the Robins rules are in this one.
So it seems like it's amending to exclude the orange area, which is west two. So included in the MBTA would be east one.
In the brown, in the brown.
I didn't include the brown.
Oh, I thought you did, okay, sorry.
Uh, so just, so just east one. Which includes half mile radius as well as the rest to Bellino Park. And then the west one red, which, which goes has this little knob into the passive, the half mile. So just east one and west one.
I would second that motion.
Okay, so why don't we, do we want to discuss that particular motion?
I just had a thought, I mean, I, I just feel like I'm looking at this and I'm being asked to. Vote on it blind, I mean, without, without seeing what's there, without remembering what's there. Um, and without making an attempt to exclude certain buildings that I think I would think are important.
I thought we just had that discussion though, Nick.
What's that?
I thought we just had that discussion about the exclusion of the three or four properties on, up to Bellino Park. We just had that.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the other buildings that, um. Um, the, 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 the buildings that, that are there. All right, um, I, I, I just want to make this, I, I just want to make um the point that I feel like I'm doing this blind because I cannot see the buildings. Uh, there's a building at the corner of Skilling's and, uh, and Maine that's, that's interesting, um.
That's not part of this, this motion.
Isn't that where the red goes down to?
No, I'm sorry, that building, Skilling's and Maine down there, yeah, my apologies. But, you know, we've, we've had these maps before us for several weeks. And so I, I'm sorry, but.
No, I just, I'm just thinking of the point that, that um, I, I do feel like I'm, I'm, I'm doing it uh blind and I, I'm not that comfortable with it, but I mean, it is what it is, so. You know, we, we didn't focus on this area. We focused on the center business district where, where we're familiar with the buildings. Uh, so.
We, we.
I mean, I mean, I.
This has been on our agenda for weeks, so. Okay, so is there any discussion on this particular motion? Other than, is there, is a motion to amend it?
I, I don't have any motions to amend, but I, I want to point out that. As part of the planning board's other project. We will have underlying zoning in place, excuse me, um, that will define. Um, the parameters of building mass and building impact on abutting properties. And those are the big things that one always worries about. When you're talking about commercial properties immediately next to residential properties and that those concerns will be addressed.
Can I, can I, um? I, i- i- if there's a motion on the floor, can I make a motion to remove the historic properties and accept them with the, with the historic properties removed?
You can certainly make a motion to amend the motion on the floor.
Okay, I'd like to amend the motion on the floor to remove the selected historic properties.
And we need to list those explicitly. So Taylor, if you would, if you would bring up a Google map so we can look at those. And just maybe.
The M A P C map that's an inventory of historic properties.
Right, but let's just, you know.
This, this works. Think this is helpful for people to see anyway.
Yes, it is.
So which, which historic properties are of concern here?
Uh, well, there's one in Skilling's and um, I think it's Pond Street in Maine, uh.
Okay, so let's say one is.
One of them.
Skilling's Pond Street in Maine.
It's actually, it's actually lake, not pond, but close.
Lake, okay, lake, uh, lake in Maine. Uh, and then there's one, I think it's Canal Street, uh, that has a. And this is just off the top of my head, the corner of Canal and Maine.
That building is, has had a delay. We can, whatever, whatever we do for an overlay doesn't change it.
That's also not within those districts that we, we are, that's on.
That is correct, I Ching.
We are only talking about things between Skilling's and Swanton.
All right, well, those, those are the only ones I can remember are the four houses plus the one in.
We need the addresses for those four houses. Can we zoom in and maybe have Google tell us what the addresses are?
We would, we would lose, it's eight, eight one, eight one one Main Street. We would lose without the addition of. Of this here, we would lose this whole. This whole district by removing those four houses.
Okay, but let's put them on there. There's eight one one.
Uh, what, what, what will we lose?
This is in the motion? Yes.
This is, this is in order for. In the, in, in Nick's amendment to the motion, we need to list the actual addresses of the buildings he wishes to remove.
Okay.
So why don't we just.
My note, and my note was that if those were removed, these here were removed. We would uh lose the rest of this uh GBD two district and fall beneath our compliance requirements. Unless these were added on the west.
So let's, let's, let's first. Get the addresses for all of those buildings so that we have a proper motion, and then we can discuss that motion. So it's starting to the one that's right next to Domin to.
Eight twenty three.
Okay, with eight twenty.
Yeah.
Eight twenty three.
It's, it's, it's eight oh five to eight twenty three.
Let's, so it's eight oh five, what's the next one, please? I want, I want the actual addresses so that we.
Eight oh seven.
Eight oh seven?
Eight oh nine.
Eight oh nine?
Eight eleven.
Eight eleven?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen?
Eight seventeen.
Eight seventeen?
Eight twenty three.
Eight twenty three. And so eight twenty three is the building, right, the red roof building at the top?
Correct.
Okay, and some of those are duplexes, which is why we have multiple numbers.
Yep.
Okay, so the, and could you give me the exact address of that building that's on the corner of Skilling's Lake and Maine? Yep.
If you click on it, does it give you that?
Yeah, it's seven two four Main Street.
Okay, so seven two four Main Street. So the, uh, the amendment to the motion would. Remove the buildings at eight oh five, eight oh seven, eight oh nine, eight eleven, eight fifteen, eight seventeen, eight twenty three and seven twenty four Main Street. From an overlay district in the GBD two. Um, is there a second to that motion?
Is there any, can I ask a question? Oh, no, not unless I second it, right?
At this point, why don't we just go ahead and you can ask a question? Is it a procedural question or does it have to do with the uh?
It's a, it's a legal question. It's a.
Sure.
Maybe it's more a comment. I just keep, they're small, you know, to our point, they're tiny little houses for a contractor to sort of profit from that. I feel like they'd have to buy multiple property. That's, is there anything that blocks a co- a developer from buying consecutive properties in town?
No, nope.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't think there isn't any town, but.
I didn't know.
So we're still looking for a second on that amendment to the main motion. And at this point, I'm going to say that there is no second for that motion. So we're back to the main motion, which is to add east one and west one. And um, oh shoot, could you go back to the, did you make that smaller so we can see all the different zones again? So it's east one and west one. So the motion before us from I Ching is to add east one and west one as part of the overlay district. And I think we had a second from Sally?
That is correct.
So um, why don't we? Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, let's go to a vote on that motion. The motion is east one and west one in the overlay district. The motion is east one and west one in the overlay district. Roll call vote, please. Um, Carrie.
Wait, we're voting to include them in three A or we're voting?
We're voting to include them in three A.
Okay. I.
Okay, um, Sally.
I.
Nick.
Uh, I'll just, I'll say nay.
Okay. Um, I Ching?
Hi.
And I say I as well, so that is four, one for those two zones. Shall we move up into the other GBDs, the other portions?
Right now, I'm trying.
Do a calculation, Taylor, please.
calculation will be as originally presented. Oops, sorry, that's not the one, my working file. You get to see the, the secrets of how it's made. Currently, if we're using minimum of CBD, um, the GBD two is that is that red and green area. So it's this calculation here with these numbers.
So it does not include the orange area?
It does not include the orange area.
Okay.
So I guess, I mean, we're looking at the, these areas to take pressure off downtown. And I guess from that perspective, you know, uh, you know, I, I, I guess, I guess I'd support, I, I, and I, I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking that the idea was to include as much of this as possible. Um, I mean, my hesitancy is relating to specific buildings, but I, I can't quantify those um, with, without, without seeing them and I, I, I support the objective of taking pressure off the center.
Can I, can I just make it clear that I don't, the, the we that you speak of Nick does not include me. That is my, not my perspective as to why I'm going to vote. And so, so I just wanna make it clear. Okay, so is there another motion?
I have, well, I was, I was thinking that I could make a motion that would include if, uh, Taylor can go back to the math again with all the wonderful colors, um, that would include the next two colors going on the west side of, um, GBD two, which is the brown and the orange, west two and three. And the reason that I was happy to take the previous vote that didn't include those was because I wanted to emphasize that if we vote these in, which we could very well do and it would be very helpful to do so. No matter what, the underlying zoning there will ensure that, uh, context sensitive design for those buildings will happen. So they don't loom over the neighborhood with shadows or whatever. So that's all I'm saying is that we're gonna do this really well and these are great locations to incorporate into our three A district, and so I moved to do so.
Which, which ones are you talking with?
Orange and brown, west two, west three.
What, what about the gray? And the, I mean, the gray looks like a large, okay.
Why don't we do this one at a time? Because I, uh, we're, we're not gonna get through this with a unanimous vote, I can tell you for sure. So the next vote is to the orange. Why don't we do this separately? Um, so why don't we do orange first?
For people following along at home, I believe the border of the red is that bagels and brew. Is that the, is that the? I just wanna get the parcels correct for people who are trying to sort of follow, you know, Z-Rack watches this. I just wanna make sure we're being really.
No, it's, it's, it's not Bagel and Brew, that's Clark Street.
Red and orange is Clark Street.
Can you do street view, Taylor?
Castle, it's the dealer one motor, so just past Castle Tire. Right.
Yeah, so this is.
Up to now. I will also mention briefly that at least as far as maybe Castle Tire, we are once again gonna be in the Wetlands Protection Act, but it's not the Abra Jona, it's Horn Pond Brook. No, not Castle Tire, maybe Lane Funeral Home. I'm just playing out.
I think we're far enough away. The, the brook is actually way down at the end of Clark Street there. So we're nowhere near the flood plain.
Passes behind, it's in the hundred foot. Tuscano is definitely is, and then Lane Funeral Home is just outside it, so it would depend if that was redeveloped, it would depend on how large the building was.
So, okay, so we're talking. We're, we're talking about the orange zone, which is between Clark Street and Water Street.
Yep, great.
And I don't know that any of those are close enough to the Abra Jona to worry about, but they're, they're, they're definitely uphill from the Abra Jona. Um, so that is, if there's a runoff concern, then. But let's just talk about west two. So the motion on the floor, I'm thankful for amending it, is to include west two in the overlay district. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have any discussion on west two?
What, what streets are those? Does that include Canal?
It goes right up to, it goes up to Water Street. Water Street is, is not Canal, it's one below Canal.
One below? Are there, are there any, uh, are there any wood frame houses there or the?
I'm sure there are plenty.
Yeah, alright, water. It goes, uh, okay, up to water.
So this is, this is a boundary where I really start to think about the population density behind this street. And the, um, number, so we've sort of, it's sort of businesses primarily until Clark Street. And then we're really starting to, you know, between Clark and Swanton on that sort of left, you know, west sense of direction is like comically bad. The left, if you're looking at the map, um, we really start to have a lot of housing down Salem Street and Richardson Street and Water, so that's where I start to really worry about adding the cha- traffic burden that was brought up at the Z-Rack meeting.
So.
Car traffic. Population.
So I, I, I think the key question is what is the existing density? And whether we would just reuse the same sort of density that's available? So if we were to do sixteen units per acre, which would be, I forget how many. I mean, we've, we've seen, we've seen plans from Michael Wang, who was on, who was on the meeting with us this evening, as a matter of fact. We've seen plans which fit into those lots and which get us to a fifteen to sixteen unit density. Um, the traffic concerns, um, I think it's important to recognize that most of the traffic that's coming down Main Street is not related to the residences next to Main Street. So if.
I mean, just human, just the people bringing.
Yeah, but it's the addition of more units on Main Street will have a negligible effect on the traffic. There's just.
Yeah, can, can I, um, through you, ask Michael the question?
Um, I think you can ask Michael directly if he wants.
Okay, great. So Michael, hi, Michael Wang of Foreman Place, um, are you able to talk?
Yeah, I'm here. Now I was just, I wasn't really prepared to participate, but I'm.
No, 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 just, I just wanna remind myself, this is an area that from a density, uh, building typology point of view. You as an urban and town designer visualize this as townhouses, is that correct?
Well, I think that would be an appropriate scale for liner to the residential neighborhood and, you know, again, a question similar to the issue that was raised before, the, 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 the narrowness of these lots is really not conducive to large multifamily block style buildings, so, um, there's only so much you can do.
That's right. So what, so the site itself constrains whatever mass or, or density um, one might dream of, there's only so much you can do in this location. Okay, so that's Michael, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Nice, you know, to argue against myself maybe, but it would be a nice, um, you know, if we could sort of do, if we could sort of incentivize first floor retail, it would be a nice way to manifest that piece of the master plan where we bring sort of more services and more conveniences and more, you know, coffee shops and, and whatnot to the, to North Main. Right, if we're, if we're sort of, but it reduces the density, I guess, if we're using first floor for retail.
So, so do I take it, um, Carrie, that you you're concerned that putting this in the overlay district would make that less likely?
I'm ju- I'm just, I'm just vetting thoughts.
Okay, okay.
I'm percolating through everything we've heard and, you know, I know these people, you know, people will review these as we sort of come up to the vote and I wanna make sure that they know all the voices have been heard and all the perspectives are thought through and that we didn't just sort of say, yeah, throw it in there, it's orange, orange matches red, you know?
No, I understand.
Yeah, I would argue that, um, because these lots are smaller, um, narrow, uh, less deep and um, line the residential areas that we, we would want to zone it for something more quiet, like residential, only maybe two and a half stories. That kind of a thing, so that it, it, it's a, it's a different, um, tempo to what comes before it and perhaps after it. And I appreciate you Sally saying to the folks listening that we, we haven't talked about that yet and this, this is just, um, about area, but we have other tools within our, our, um, abilities to, to tone it down and to make it more appropriate to the neighborhood. They're not all gonna be four stories high with, you know, bustling multifamily stuff. This is, this is possible that we can reduce the, the tempo here and, um, make it, make it you know, suitable to, to all that residential stuff behind it.
Thank you for building on that and, and that's what I meant when I said context sensitive and maybe that was just too many words put together.
And it's helpful to remember that a few more acres gives us the option to do this instead of this.
Right.
So we had a motion for west two, did we have a second?
Yeah, I, I think you got a second, right?
I can't remember anymore.
Yeah, Sally, Sally did it and I, I seconded it.
Okay, so why don't we, or, or?
Before we vote, can we update then where we are, what's our final numbers with North Wedge Park View and the CBD districts we already added?
What would be? Twenty-seven point zero four acres total, fifteen point two of that.
Wait, can you show the chart? I can't hear these numbers in air. Too complex.
This is, this is without that orange. If we add the orange, one point seven seven will be outside, will still be will still be on track for compliance.
Wait, so before this vote, the total that's already been approved?
Is what you see in front of you.
Twenty-seven point oh four.
Correct.
That's, that's acres.
Not counting CBD.
That's correct, yeah, there's no CBD here, yeah.
Oh, I see, right.
So our goal, our target is thirty-seven, however, if we have a greater area then we can modulate our density here so that we can be a little bit more virtuistic about where we wanna increase things and, and to reduce things. So I, I would encourage, um, well, Nick, you, you mentioned that you hadn't, you hadn't sort of, um, you, you were thinking, taking that into consideration after the vote, but the, the reason why we would include more areas outside of the CBD is so that we can, we can do that, we can be a little bit more varied.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I, I guess I do agree with that. I think that we should do our best to, to get some acreage, uh, to that, to that end.
The, the one caveat is that if we increase the total area above what's, you know, so we have to have at least half of the total acreage has to be within a half mile. So if we actually increase the area outside of the half mile by too much, we will then have to increase what's inside half mile.
Oh, I see, I see.
So it's, it's, that's the, that's the extra sort of surprise.
That was exactly the question that I was pondering earlier today. So that's really important. What I would recommend that we do now is we say, now that we understand what, what, what the numbers would look like if we were to vote in uh, the, the orange, I forget what it's called, it's called west three, I think.
West two, west.
It's called west two. If we were to incorporate west two, we, we understand that it, um, you know, this is what it looks like if we don't incorporate west two and we should look at the numbers and say what would happen because west two is just not even part of this model yet. It's, it's included in one of these, oh, it's included in part of GBD three, I think, um, that.
West, west two would be GBD two.
Right. Oh, so west two is already included in the ten six four?
No.
No.
It's not, this is only what we voted on. We have.
If we knew what the ten six four would turn into if we added west two and we take that number with us and we go down to the CBD district, it will inform us about how, what our final decision would be, because that would take care of everything.
So I believe it's like one point seven seven, am I correct?
Right, so Sally, it sounds like you wanna keep that in your back pocket.
I wanna just see what the num- what's the acreage?
Numbers come out to, once we start talking.
I'm, I'm sure we have it on a map.
So if we add it to, we're gonna add that to the bottom line and that brings us up to approximately um, thirteen point five, thirteen point five acres outside of a half mile. So we're still okay, we don't have to increase the volume or the acreage inside of.
Inside the CBD to accept this area.
Right, so we still have another couple acres to play with.
It's good to have a few acres to play with because one of the things that can happen legally is that for some reason or another the, um, agency called Housing and Community Development might invalidate one or more properties or districts and so we.
Right, but we do need to, we need to get to eighteen in the half mile district. We're not at eighteen yet.
Right. All right, well then we, now we're ready to go back and talk about the CBD then.
We might wanna, I, I think that we have the options of Gin and St. Mary's also within the half mile that we should bear in mind.
Okay, so why don't we go back to, why don't we go back to Gin, the CBD and St. Mary's?
Am I misremembering that there was a motion or?
No, there was, you are not. There is a motion on the floor. We've had our discussion. Um, I think, did we get a second? I believe we did. So let's, the, the motion is to add west two in the GBD two district, to our overlay district. And so a roll call vote on that, Nick?
I.
Sally?
I.
Um, Carrie?
I.
And, um, did I miss someone?
Me.
I Ching.
I Ching.
I.
And, um, I say nay. So it's a four zero, four one zero on west two, adding that to the overlay district.
Is, is the gray area outside the half mile? Are all these outside the half mile?
Yes.
Okay.
So let's move now to, um, Gin Road, St. Mary's and the CBD. With the notion that we have to pick up, um, another, at least three acres in the CBD.
Can we? Which one would you like to do first?
Why don't we do Gin?
Okay, I need to excuse myself just for a sec. I'll put it up here and you can.
But we also haven't really talked about the new St. Mary's area.
Right, we, we ought to talk about that as well and.
Well, we will.
Well, I mean, I, I think we should talk about the center business district and then find out what we need at the end of that to make up the difference.
Wait, what did that mean? Oh, the three, what did the three acres in the CBD mean that we took three outside the half mile?
No, we still have not yet made it to the minimum requirement in the CBD. Into the, into, within a half sta- not the CBD, I should rephrase that, to within the half station mile. We need, I believe, we need eighteen point six acres and we currently only have fifteen point some.
Is this fifteen point some including the eleven that would be included in the CBD?
Is that? The fifteen point some is, are the areas that we voted on.
So far, so, so if we vote for the minimum of the CBD will be above.
We haven't gotten to the minimum of the CBD. So I guess if, I, I don't understand your, your comment.
Minimum acreage for the CBD, we, we go above.
Yeah, that's my question. If we, if we, if we just.
I think it's important that we not say CBD if we don't mean CBD. We're talking about the half mile radius, which is what the MBTA, the MBTA calls it. the half mile radius, which is what the MBTA, the MBTA calls it, the station area. And you'll see that.
I'm talking about the, the map, the, with, with the least amount of uh included area in the center. Which, which, which was, it was shown as having eleven point something square miles, square acres, square acres, right?
There was include everything, there was include a few. Include the, exclude the museum district. He's saying if we approve the most limited of that, we're above.
Right, well, that, that's correct, right?
I believe that is correct. But we did want to talk
You say so far, we only have thirteen acres. Can I just tell this back?
We have, we have only voted in to the station area. We have only voted in thirteen acres. So we still have to vote in more acreage within the station area.
So Diab, I mean, Taylor, are you able to go back to that map?
I don't know if Taylor's back with us. Oh, his mouse is moving. Somebody's mouse moved.
He popped back on and then popped off. Give him a sec.
Well, but so, I'm sorry.
Taylor, Taylor, wait, well, it's, let's, Taylor, you seem to be back.
Hold on, he'll come back.
Maybe it's his dog.
That'll be amazing.
Yeah, for a cat, there'd just be garbage typing across the screen. Um, so Taylor, we're looking for the three, the, the slide which showed the three different views of the north CB, of the CBD area.
How, how about now?
No, we're still seeing same. We, we're, we're seeing Saint Mary's right now. We would like to see the CBD.
I think you have to unshare.
Sorry, Mike.
Uh, we can see you scrolling right there.
Down, number forty one. Is that it?
That's it.
Right, so right now we're at eleven point four three. Is that what your numbers show on the chart?
For option four?
Yeah.
Well, when you, when you've, yeah, so when you
When you show us our progress so far, is that based on eleven four?
So our progress so far, I, I removed the, so you'll see that there's no CBD in here right now. So our progress right now is based off of having no CBD.
So what we're seeing of
Go ahead, Diab, sorry.
So all I'm saying is what we're seeing here is we've got fifteen acres in the station area due to the GBD south of Clark Street and to the North Wedge Pond area.
Correct.
So we need to add in at least three more acres. Probably, I'm going to say we need to add in a lot more than that for buffer. So I think we might need to add in five because just, just in case.
I don't understand what you're talking about. We're, we're gonna add a minimum of eleven point four three.
You are correct. I am talking out of my hat.
You're saying we need to add three, but we can
We need to add at least three.
Four, three and, and we're there.
Yeah, and you're, you're correct.
But, I mean, I mean, there, there are, I mean, I, I guess globally, I'm thinking, well, okay, we could, we can go above and, and there are some advantages of having the Gin Estate because it achieves some of our other goals of but anyway, um.
So does the board want to make a decision on which of these four options they want? Or do we want to go back and talk about Gin Road and Saint Mary's?
Well, I'd like to make a suggestion about option number three, um, which is, well, between option three and option four. Um, if you go up Shore Road, there's specific lots that we could discuss that wouldn't break contiguity, but it would make the, the upside, upside down L shaped pat, uh, stretch of land on option three, lower right, um, smaller.
Right.
But not, not
Yeah.
So are we not, so just, just to get those through this, so the board wants to talk about this page, not Gin Road and Saint Mary's.
Yeah, I think so.
The last time we wanted to talk about Saint Mary's and Gin Road, but now we're going to talk about these.
My suggestion is simply that if you zoom in really well, Taylor, and actually it might be good to go to a maps view, you know, satellite map view, um some of these buildings.
You can keep talking. I'll, 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 I'll pull it up.
Um, yes, so some of these buildings are already, um multifamily buildings. And um being mindful of the fact that let's see, where are we? Right, so if you put the, right. We're talking about whether any of the non-Mont Vernon Street buildings that go up the right side of Shore Road um would be not um difficult to imagine zoning to be part of an overlay district of three A. And I think that the upper part of this I would say we could take out um and just include the first and the second building, um.
Right, the, the first building is the medical building and the second is that super tall condo.
Okay, I think that we could
Those make sense to include. The others have a mix of buildings which include some really charming small buildings.
And I wonder if this, we make this one addition to option four or this one modification to option three, whether we could look at what that number would be.
Maybe we make an addition to option four with those two buildings, the two large buildings that we know.
Yeah.
I, if I could quickly interject, we have to worry about contiguity here. I do not believe that the state will think that something separated by a railway line is a contiguous area. So unless those buildings to the east of the railway line form five acres.
Oh, I didn't know that. I thought that it was already determined that contiguity was, um uh, uh, included rail lines. Maybe Adam can advise.
Well, it includes streets.
Well, it includes some streets and we had contiguity before because we use the public safety building to provide that contiguity in the land area. Now that the public safety building is out, we now have what is essentially a isolated parcel. Um, because it really is divided by an obstacle. There's a wall there.
We're allowed to use the public safety building, aren't we?
Yeah, why is that removed?
Why is that removed?
I do not know.
It was removed at, at request. I mean, because we weren't going anywhere with it. Yeah, we, we would have, because all this area down here, I mean, requested to be removed.
We don't have to know why, but it, you know, it, well, maybe we, we do, but uh, but it
Well, I think We can certainly explore creating a, uh, an optional zone here. I'm having a tough time seeing with the satellite.
Yeah.
We could explore using an op- uh, zone here with, using the public safety building to add a little bit more area and potentially coming down to converse, but I don't know if that's possible.
I mean, if, if it's really going to be a con- a, a contiguity issue, I'd be more comfortable with four and, and you know, try to add some space at Gin.
Adam, you, you, you can go ahead.
Thank you. I didn't, I didn't want to interrupt. So is the concern relative to contiguity this reverse or upside down L shape as it relates to the remainder of the proposed district?
Yes, i- i- in the railroad, the railroad being uh breaking continuity or not breaking continuity.
So I, I, I don't believe, and again, I'm going to say this like I say everything in the context of three A as I don't believe because it has been that moving target I referred to before. I don't believe that the current interpretation by EO HLC is that the right of way breaks contiguity. There, there's a guidance document, again, available on the state's website that speaks about rights of ways generally. The focus is not necessarily on MBTA rights of way. It's on roadways t- typically public roadways that divide, um, divide segments of districts and all the examples they give indicate that uh the, the public way as a right of way does not, um that does not interfere with t- contiguity. So my sense is they would apply the same rationale here and they would determine that the MBTA line does not break the contiguity here.
So
That's, that's very helpful.
I, I hate to play devil's advocate. But certainly if one looked at Monsignor O'Brien Highway in Somerville, it is also a public right of way. It's about ten lanes across. And I would imagine that that would break contiguity.
Uh, you know, I, I think that the buildings that we're talking about aren't going to um bring us below. So let's say that the state comes back and says, oh, you can't use the medical building and you can't use that tall condo. Uh, and they, they, they take those out. It's not going to bring us below the threshold. So we're still, we're still okay.
If, I would like to know if we can include those buildings um in the three A um overlay district. Um, i- i- if contiguity is presumed, can we include those first? I don't know if it's two or, no, it's the, it's the second and the third lot up shore from the corner. No, it's all, the, the three, the first three lots, aren't those all tall buildings already?
What's the third lot? I don't know what that is.
Can we do street view?
Parking lot. It's a parking lot.
Oh, that's the parking lot, okay.
Very helpful to know. Um, but so my, my, my proposal
Okay, and right beyond the parking lot toward the back is that uh is a house that it's got two columns in the front and it's, it's really charming.
Right, and I'm saying that it's helpful to
Right, this, we can include this building.
It's, well, it's helpful to include them because uh, we are sort of fine tuning our, to get to our acreage numbers in the most sensitive way possible. And so including this, just this stretch, since it's already presumed contiguous would help us, um it towards our number. It would not include the building on the corner of Shore and
Right, would not include the Lexington Building.
Right, so that's, that's my, that's what I'm proposing.
Can we, um, there, there's also another building that it, it's, it's excluded from the green map. But it's added back in on the red map. It's the comic book building. And I, I think it's an important building. And on the green map, you can see that it's excluded. Uh, so i- 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 if we make a change to the red map, I'd like to see that excluded also on the red map. Right there. Yeah, that's, that's a very um classic. I- 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 if you've seen the storefronts, they're all, they've all been renovated. The, the, the brick detail is, is interesting. It's, it's a, it's an important building that probably should be excluded from the red map as well.
So I, I think the reason it was excluded is there was concerns about contiguity. But it was put back in, the reason it was put back in was concerns about gerrymandering the district.
But if you go back to the, um, the red map itself, oh, green.
The green map has it, has it out. So, and it, I mean, it's
And, and that, and it does maintain contiguity. Um, Diab, it, it basically just makes a little donut hole.
I guess, I guess, Sal, I mean, can I, can I move to include the I guess four with, with those
Can, can we first narrow it down from four to one and then talk about what we're going to add to the one?
Sure.
Um, if we stay on this map, can we stay on this map for a second? Because I also am wondering why below, so across from the church, right? There, there's that, um, the pharmacy, right? Winchester Pharmacy, um, that whole block, um, here.
Right, that's, that's an important building, the pharmacy.
I understand that. This is excluded here. Can you let me finish? Um, and then there's an art deco building that your pointer is right at right now. Um, but, but that whole area, that alleyway seems to be sort of, um conducive to housing. Um, it's quiet, um, and those two blocks as well, I, um the, the two, two parcels, um, to the left of that on Vine. Um, I don't think are included in the red map. So, so that
Yeah, the, the two parcels are included.
Oh, they are. Okay, so the
Yeah, yeah, and I mean
Hold on a second, Nick, please. Um, I, so the, the U shaped um inclusion of those four parcels would be helpful, right? Those four, um, I don't know what that to, to add to the acreage here.
That's, I mean, that's the art deco bank building. I mean, the, uh
No one's going to tear it down.
That's what I'm talking about with adaptive reuse. No one's going to tear down that building.
People will pay a lot more money to have a residence in an old art deco bank building. So they're not going to tear it. No one in their right mind would tear that down. That's insane.
I, I think you're being
No, Nick.
Nick, I'm talking about, if you look across our neighboring communities, you will see these very buildings turned into housing. Because it's, it's because that's what people want.
I, I, I don't want to include them.
But why don't we, can we, can we go back to the four different maps for the CBD and at least get rid of the ones we don't like? Because I think that would help us reduce this decision tree to something manageable. So why don't we just vote on vote on these options, see which one gets through and then edit as we see fit.
Okay, so I would put a motion on the table that with option three, we, um, we vote on option three with the exception of the cluster of four or five houses that are in that large part of the upside down L. And we would include only the first three lots going south to north on shore that are in red right now. Uh, we could look up the street numbers. That would be a helpful thing to do.
We will have to do that.
Can we exclude the comic book building?
Um, we're doing them one at a time, Nick.
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna get some motions here. So the first is to accept option three. Can we just, can we start with saying we don't like option one? We don't like option two? We don't like option four? Cause then we can just focus on option three. Cause it turns out more of us like one of the other options. You're wasting time on option three.
Oh, so
How do we, we should take options?
Option three, we can massage it and then change it, you're saying?
That's what I'm proposing. I'm saying that this, the, 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 so Taylor has an enormous amount of modeling calculations and he came up with what he thinks are the four things that gelled out of conversations to date. And I personally think that option three with some minor modifications and we can talk about each one um as long as we don't break the model, could be the map that we would all agree on for this part of the station area.
Okay, so I think that, I, I'm, I just want to step back a little bit.
Do the same thing with option four, but
Twenty fifteen zoning by law, sort of, the town meeting said, let's put housing in, so the option one is sort of kind of what, what town meeting wanted to incentivize, right? So, but I acknowledge that there, there are, well, I mean, eight years, nine years now, right? Nothing has been built, actually, right? In those nine years. So it, it saddens me that we can't, we can't sort of have some kind of very effective rezoning to, to incentivize this. So I, I would have loved option one. Um, option two and three, I think, are sort of between those two are the closest. And I understand, you know, there's some I understand your point, Diab, about the congressional church. It already has inherent rights within it where it can become housing. And, you know, that, but including it, I think would be politically difficult for us um, or for, for this to pass. So I, I, I concede that. Um, and then three, I, I think is cleaner in that, you know, we are focusing, I don't know if we're still going to do this, but Main Street, North Main Street. And so focusing this towards the north helps us clarify things, these two very different zoning proposals for town meeting. And, and to include some of the other things kind of muddles it. Um, and you know, I think those, those, the option three and option two together, somewhere in the middle would, would be what I would hope for.
Is there a way to get to Waterfield through the two parks without going through the church?
I don't know that Waterfield would
You would have to include, you would have to include something here. Like where that savings bank is, you have to include something there.
All right, I mean, we don't need it, but I, I just was wondering if you could get to
I think that it was reported to us that because it's a town owned property, Diab, is that right?
That is my, yeah, we can, we can ask town council for that opinion since he's right here.
Right, well, I, I guess in the spirit of the law, we don't need it because it's not gonna, it's not gonna change. Right. Well, I, I guess in the spirit of the law, we don't need it because it's not gonna, it's not gonna change. I mean.
We don't know that we don't need it yet, but so why don't we ask, um, Adam Costas, sir, can you tell us what the possibility is of the town's Waterfield Lot Development being part of a three A overlay district?
What's the status of the lot today?
It is owned by the town. It is leased, it will be leased to a company which will maintain the building for ninety-nine years.
No, they own the lease for ninety-nine years.
They own the lease for ninety-nine years, but the, the land itself is still owned by the town. And there's, there's, there's sixty, fifty, fifty-three units of housing going in there.
So, you know, the, these sorts of properties are generally considered on a case-by-case basis based upon developability and, and the potential for that future use. So I, I'm not surprised and I don't know from whom you heard it before or whether it was an analysis done internally or whether uh somebody had a conversation with EO HLC. But I wouldn't be surprised if the state's position is that um either you couldn't include it or to the extent you did include it, that the acreage wouldn't count towards satisfying the minimum requirements under three A. Only because if it's subject, if it's already developed and the likelihood for redevelopment is slim to none because it's uh at least land owned by the town, at least in the, in the ensuing, you know, seventy-five to a hundred years. I don't know how, how far into that ninety-nine year lease term you are. But um it wo- wouldn't shock me that the state's position is that it's, it's not, um, it doesn't qualify.
Yeah, the, the building has, is actually not been built. It's still under, they're still trying to get a permit from the planning board. Um, and we're having a vote on it in a few weeks. So that's how early stages it is.
Okay.
So no, so, but you still feel that that probably it would not be counted towards, it would not be admissible.
Maybe not. I mean, certainly that changes things if, if it is not a constructed building yet. Um, I, I, I think that that's again, another factor. So if it is to be developed, uh, um, then, then maybe that, that weighs toward it counting. So um again, I think that this is a circumstance where if the town had real interest in including it, um, we would want to have maybe a proactive conversation with staff at, at HLC to get a sense as to whether that's something that would be acceptable. I don't think there's any guidance that directly speaks to municipally owned land and more specifically municipally owned land that is subject to a long-term lease.
Okay. I also, I just want to make the point that we only, that we're looking, as D F said, we're looking for three to five acres. So we don't need that parcel to get there. And on any of the options.
So it's a, it's a side question. It's interesting. Um, E Ching, I would be curious to know in the differences between option two and option three, what portions of those differences in the option two green areas? Um, are you thinking would be potentially um good, for whatever reason, to include?
So as I mentioned, the U-shaped um behind Winchester Pharmacy, not including Winchester Pharmacy, is, is a really great opportunity for there to be quieter sort of programming, meaning housing um across from the park, across from the church, sort of um without some retail stuff. So that U shape would be, and that, that block would be great. And I would, and I would advocate for your inclusion of Shore Road. Um, if it can cross through to Converse Place and some of the areas in there that could be really um lovely housing, um, I think, I think that would be wonderful. But I, I think that Church Street, that whole area, it would be, it, I think it, it could use a couple of floors up um in terms of housing, but you know, the retail is very precious there. Um, and if, if we're not using those tools to keep those retail places in downtown, then I, I'd say, you know, maybe it's not. It, it, it sort of is a little bit too ambitious. Um, but I, you know.
I'm sorry, you lost me on the last part about church.
On Church Street. I, I would love for more housing to be there next to the Wa- Waterfield area. Um, it's, it's, it loses the um ground floor retail.
Right, right. So, so what you're saying is include the U-shaped building that's in the center to the left of the Rotary in option two. The green U. And that you would also endorse adding from the upside down L, the bottom two.
Along Converse Place, right?
Bottom, bottom three lots.
China Sky is and where the insurance company is. I mean, those are sort of ripe for, there would be, it would be wonderful.
Right. So it would be the Converse, buildings that front on Converse Place. Plus for me on Shore Road, it would be the bottom two, the, the two tall existing buildings that are there. I don't know if it's two or three. I'm getting confused now. But that plus, now, the thing to know about Converse Place, to Carrie's point, is that a lot is, is under discussion as to how developable it is.
I understand.
Doesn't mean we can't use it.
Where's Converse Place?
It's. It's.
So, um, Taylor.
Oh, those, oh, 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 those, oh, yeah.
Taylor, do, do we have the ability to put a whiteboard up? Or some sort of, can we draw on the screen? Do we have annotations? Somewhere in Zoom, you have annotations, so.
Yeah, I don't know if this, this is the town, we use the town.
Whiteboards, you can do whiteboard, new whiteboard. It's in the lower.
No, 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 we need, we need annotations. We don't, cause I, I, I misspoke. Whiteboard just gives us a whiteboard.
Oh, nevermind.
Need is the ability to draw on the, on the screen as it stands.
Well, there's an app. There's an apps button.
And the, the, Nick, the reason why I would advocate for more um square footage is again, we're not just counting thirty-seven, we um need to have an average density of fifteen units per acre. And so that, if we have a very tight space, we can't do very much in, in modulating any of that density. Whereas if we have a larger space, we can modulate it and control it more.
Right. Maybe we can add the municipal buildings, um, the fire station and the police station.
And what's been referred to as the public safety building. And we did discuss adding that back in because it would facilitate contiguity to the buildings that front on Converse.
Oh, oh, just, oh, just for Converse? You wanna, you, you wanna bring back Converse?
Well, understanding that the question of the development of the land fronting the pond on Converse.
You don't want to have control over the development of Converse?
EPA has development of Congress.
That's right. That is exactly right. Thank you, Carrie. And the other buildings that front on Converse, Carrie mentioned China Sky and you mentioned Scotty Insurance. Are those the two?
Yeah. I, I mentioned it, Sally.
It was E Ching, I'm sorry. E Ching had made a point about that being a potentially very nice place to put a small increase in housing.
That's true. That China Sky, yeah.
Why I was trying to get the contiguity of the, of the.
Okay, I see.
Public safety building.
So I, I, I believe we could, if we, if we, um, I can draw on my screen, Taylor, if you would make me, if you would allow me to snatch sharing.
Um, I just did it pretty quickly. If you don't like it, then we can, I'll give it to you. But here's what I heard E Ching propose.
Oh, wow.
Yes, that's what I was gonna suggest.
Taylor, there's a, there's a building, there, there, there are, the U-shaped thing needs to get the middle of the U cut out of it.
We're not, we're not done with that one yet. Let's, let's just deal with the one on the right, yeah.
No, 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 no. And then, and then the, and then the, the one next to the, the drug that goes street to street all the way through needs to get taken out as well.
Okay, we have to take this one out, Ben.
No.
No, leave, leave a corner one in.
Yeah, we can't, I don't think, we can't do that.
We can do it across the street.
Oh, what, what, what are we doing?
That's what Carrie talked about, the U-shaped.
Because you, you have the cross, you have across the street that you have contiguity with that corner, the corner one.
You have across the street.
I, I, I understand, Nick. Hold on, hold on, hold on, no, hold on.
But, you know, I, let me just put it clearly. I did, I, I, I disagree. I disagree with these edits. So why don't we work on the parts we agree with and then the parts we disagree with, we can argue about. But I am not in agreement to having those two areas cut out.
Well, we, well, we talked about the U and we have those two historic buildings.
And I believe they are perfectly available for adaptive reuse. And that's where we have a fundamental disagreement, Nick. But I think we should focus on the areas where we do agree.
Right, I think that we were getting close to that. Definitely that we talked about the U-shaped um being a, a, E Ching made a strong case for why that would be a good place to include in the three A overlay.
So let's, if I might, can we, can we look at the area which is on the other side of the railroad tracks? The Shore Road, Public Safety, Converse Place.
That's what's highlighted now in gray, right?
That part in gray. So is this an area that we all agree should be included?
I, I don't love how close it is to the river. The two parcels right on the water are what right now?
Those are actually town-owned land and they would not be developed. They're there merely for area.
Isn't that?
So let me get to that. I'm just measuring.
Oh, wait, one of them, it does, one of them might have.
No, no, that's, that's the one, that's, that's my office building. That's, that's a Barrett-Sunderby's.
That's right. That is the commercial building.
Okay, I'm sorry. That is a commercial building. Behind it is.
Why can't it be included in a three A district?
What about the church next to it, across the river?
Oh.
That would be nice housing.
Well.
I mean, do we need this much land? I, I think, I think we're, we're, we're doing overkill at this point.
I think if we're gonna make the case to exclude a congregational church, it would be an inconsistent discussion to talk about this church.
I think it's more a historical issue there.
Yeah, it is a historical issue, but Sally doesn't have a point. I don't know why we need it. I mean, I, I think we're just overreaching at this point.
So that we have a little bit more range in what we can do with the, with the.
Right, well, I mean.
So why don't we, may I make a compromise here? Why don't we take out the, the building where that E Ching has identified, which is right next to the river? And the one, the lot behind it, I thought was a town-owned lot, but maybe not.
Wait, why, 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 why take out that building? Why are we, why are we taking out that?
Because Carrie has raised issues about whether something is buildable. So let's remove those issues.
It's a very, very old building, just so you know.
It's a four-story old building. So the lot behind it, I don't, we can take the lot behind it as well.
I would too, Diab, but I appreciate you doing that to get very.
Let's take that.
Just Carrie's thinking.
Yeah. So Taylor, can you take out the lot behind the um the, yeah, that one right there. Yeah, remove that one. So what we have now is we still have a contiguous area which gets us.
Which is contiguous to the purple right there.
Right, so. So is there, are there any objections to this particular zone?
Well, let me ask a question about the corner of the Quill Rotary and the little street that goes, um, well, there's something about a, a, the little, a drum shop across from the drum shop, the gray. What is that building and why is this other part taken out?
So can we, I, can we get to that next? Can we?
Yes, I didn't know if you wanted to just talk about the red box or the whole screen.
I just want us to talk about the red box and come to a final decision because it's already nine twenty-two.
Good.
So can we, is, are there any concerns with this red boxed area?
The only thing is, I, on Converse, if you, on the back of Cafe Nero, right? Is that like little hammer or little axe looking thing?
Yep.
That head would be great for housing, except that it, it seems like it's connected to Cafe Nero. And so.
Well, it's actually, I think, yeah.
It's one, we can't, we can't subdivide parcels.
Nope, right.
They have, yeah, no, no, it's, it's too sensitive.
So the point is that even though that might be a great place to re, redevelop, you would have to go all the way to the, to the frontage on Main Street.
Okay.
I'm sorry to keep hammering this point, but I would like to hear from council whether there, whether anyone's seen anything about the intersection between three A and the Wetlands Protection Act, because a lot of this is in the hundred foot. So I just, is there anything that would compromise protection of the riverfront? Would, would there be something that would give a developer um sort of favor in developing on the waterfront if it's included in the three A communities that they wouldn't necessarily have under the Wetlands Protection Act?
No.
So Wetlands Protection Act takes precedent and the development standards would have to be according to the Wetlands Protection Act first. And then the permissions granted by three A and the town things.
So I, I, I don't think that the way that um, that the each, uh, the, the EO HLC documents read, it uses the term precedence in terms of providing some sort of priority for the Wetlands Protection Act. But I think, and I'm looking for it as we speak here, I think that the way it's phrased is, a- again, going back to one of the things we discussed early on in the meeting tonight, this uh, three A and MBTA communities is a um, a, a, a zoning concept. Um, doesn't, does not affect the applicability of Title V requirements or Wetlands Protection Act requirements or even things like demolition delays. So if I can find it, I'll, I'll chime in and I'll tell you exactly what the language is. But um certainly, but by virtue of rezoning to allow for this denser development, it, it does not obviate any of the protections available under the Wetlands Protection Act or any local bylaw.
So using ten Converse as an example, there wouldn't have been a step in the process as it unfolded where the, the decision would have been, but it's a three A community's property, so it can proceed.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more concerns about this subzone?
I, I, I'd like to have a little more control over ten Converse than, than by right, but um, you know, I guess.
So, so the difference, the, there, you know, so the existing CBD guidelines allow you to build a pretty big structure on that lot by right. As long as you maintain, you don't block views and such. So it's a complex enough lot that, you know, with the towns, the, the reason I think we should note that ten Converse is not going forward is for two reasons. One of them is a disagreement as to whether or not the soil is undisturbed. Um, and that's a DEP reason. And the other reason it's not going forward is because Winchester has its own um waterways protection rule, and Carrie knows much more about this than I, which restricts your, which makes it, you cannot further obstruct the waterway by the building you put in there. So those two things are independent of the zoning. And whatever happens on, on that Concord, Converse Place lot, we'll have to. So I, I, it's a complex enough place to develop. Then I don't, yeah. So any, any other concerns? Can, can we move to a vote?
That's not just ten Converse. That's any property that I pointed out is definitely within the hundred foot buffer zone. But yes.
Yes, yes, yes. It prevails. So. Um, is, is there a motion to include this red box as part of our overlay district?
I would so move.
And what are we gonna call this one? Let's just be sure. This is, we need to give it a name.
Well, it's, it's.
It's museum plus town.
We can give the specific addresses.
Wait, 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 why are we just voting on this one parcel? I mean.
Cause we're doing them one at a time, Nick.
What's that?
Cause we're trying to move us through one at a time so that we can at least mark something off.
We change his vote on one parcel at a time. We, we need to think about the whole thing.
Street numbers.
This is the edited version of the version four.
Yes. This is a combination of three and four.
And Taylor, if you switch to map view, then we can get street numbers. On Shore Road, it would be, um, oh, can I see that? No, I can't. You have to do it anyway.
So you were looking at the, at the.
It's this building that says Winchester Plumbing on it? Oh, there. Okay, yes.
So we're, we're looking, what are, are we asking for the addresses to exclude or?
No, this is the addresses that we're adding back into the.
Right, those three lots that we're adding back in.
Eleven Shore Road. This is included, eleven Shore Road and then um twenty-three Shore Road and then um uh, the Winchester Public Safety Property.
Just thirty Mount Vernon.
Thirty Mount Vernon. And then, um.
Ten, ten Converse.
Ten Converse and then the Scotty Insurance, which is nineteen Mount Vernon. Now that would mean that, that, that little bit of first floor commercial right there would be impacted. So we have to.
And then we have the, and then those China Sky.
China Sky, right.
And what is, what's that number?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven Converse. So. I just wanted, if you could just go back to Shore Road for a second, because I just have a question about that. So I see that we got these two big buildings. Okay, yes, that answers my question because the other one's a parking lot and that's public safety land. Or whatever it is. Right. Okay, yeah. That's what I am proposing.
So we're including the parking lot next to twenty-three Shore Road as well?
I think that we do because it's a public, well, no, I take that back. The people will.
It's not a public lot. It's, I don't know who owns that lot.
I think it's a town lot.
And I, well, let's, let's find out. I don't even see it on the map.
Town, town of Winchester.
Okay, so we're including that lot. For area, for contiguity in area. Okay.
Right.
So then, so we're gonna include. The, um, town lot on Shore Road. Plus the public safety building.
Oh, Taylor, when you calculate area, you won't cross the street.
I know, but for the purpose of this rough.
Yeah, okay, so I think, so let's call this the museum slash Converse.
I think we should just hold this aside as, as we more or less agree with it on a straw poll basis, but I, I don't think we're gonna vote for it until we vote for the whole district.
But I would call this the Shore Road, Shore Converse Edition. Just to talk with a shorthand, it's the Shore Road Converse Place Edition.
Okay, so. How many people wish to vote on this now and how many people wish to hold off?
I would vote on this now on the basis that this additional. Um, area inside the, uh, stationary, the one half mile radius. Um, gives us just that incrementally more buffer.
Okay, um, Carrie?
Are you just asking if I wanna vote now or are we, but we're just asking?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna know if, if the board wants to vote now or, or hold this off as Nick would, would prefer.
Why don't we vote on the whole area? The whole thing?
Nick, 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 let me ask the rest of the board, please.
Whatever's necessary to move it forward is fine with me. So if it moves us forward to vote.
And eaching, do you have a preference?
Um, I, I'm ready to vote for it. Now.
Okay. So. Let us, so would someone please? Put a motion to include this area which we are calling the Shore Converse Extension?
I think Sally did. I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. So let's do a real call vote. Um, Carrie?
Hi.
Uh, who's next? Nick?
I, I'm not gonna vote for a matter of procedure.
Okay, um, Sally?
I.
Um, who did I miss?
Me, eaching.
Eaching?
I.
And I say I as well. So that, you're, you're, you're abstaining. Is that correct, Nick?
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say no. I'll abstain, I'll abstain. It's fine.
Okay, so it's four zero one on the Shore. Converse Extension.
Yeah.
So now let's move across the, um, across the. Rotary to the, um, whatever the heck we're gonna call this. This is.
Well, what's the name of that street between?
Maybe Northwest? What is that street?
We're sent to give us the street name.
It's Park Street.
Okay, now you can, now you can see the parcels.
Elmwood Park Street.
Right there, there we go.
Park Elman Vine.
Park Elman Vine, okay.
So, so, um, just to get oriented. The buildings that, um, we are showing on the red map. Are the two large squares at the top. The larger square down the left side.
Are just the two at the top, not the ones in this section.
Well, let's.
Can I see the one that you're excluding? What, what, what is that little L?
This one?
Empty space, yes.
Look, Carrie and I went through the town and we identified the historic buildings and we. We, we proposed that they be excluded.
That's the, that's the building that Moriarty has renovated, I believe.
Yep.
And that's where his shops are. Um, I think.
I think we should leave it out. I, I, I think that these buildings are vulnerable. They could, they're vulnerable to. Demolition.
I think this would be a great rehab and adaptive reuse.
Absolutely.
I can't imagine somebody tearing down all that material. I mean, that's like really good brick.
There's such a market demand for this kind of condominium or apartment so close to the town.
It's, it still has the option of being built, it's just not under the ill fitting. Uh, three A purview.
Is there a way to find out how old this building is?
Yeah, just give me a sec. You're gonna have to talk amongst yourselves and I'll figure it out.
It would be protected by the demo delay.
There's no demo delay. It, it, there's no five year demo delay.
There's a one, where there's a very least a one year demo delay.
It's also very little area, so I don't know if that's worth, you know, sort of like.
Very little area. I think we should protect it.
And I, I, I have an opposite opinion, so I think we're gonna have to take a vote on this. Um, so we have.
What is this building number that we're looking at with the three by three windows or whatever? Right there, the brick one.
Eighteen to twenty.
Eighteen to twenty Park Street?
Yep.
Great, okay, so we're talking about all of this block except potentially for eighteen to twenty Park Street. And something about the drugstore building, but otherwise we're talking about this block being incorporated into the three A district.
Actually, I think, no, I think that there are some very oppositional voices on that, views on that.
So just, just so that everyone knows, the year, the assessed year on this building is two thousand twenty-three.
So it's a new building?
No, it's not.
It's been renovated. It's been renovated. Yeah, it's not a new building.
Assessment, every, every building gets assessed every year.
You've. But it's the, it's the, it's the current prop, yeah, it's the, that's, that's what, that's what the, I can only tell you what the town has for its date and it's twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, there's the year built field somewhere on the record card, but, but can we go back to the red map? I'm getting confused.
Yes, oh, this is just.
But purple, sorry. Red.
You want purple with?
Stick with purple.
Okay.
So.
We just had a good look at what's inside the center of that U.
And I, I believe that that is. An acceptable place to put in residential units because I think.
Doesn't mean we should have it under three A. I mean, Z Rock wanted us to exclude historic buildings and I think we're, we're, uh.
I think.
You know, not doing justice to that.
I, I think that we are doing justice to that. It's just that some of us may not, may, may take their advice and still come to a different conclusion. So.
I still have a question. Tell me about the irregular corner here. There's a gray square, a long white lot connecting park to. Connecting through.
Yeah, so that's, that's a single building. That's an existent building. It's that.
Right, that was not historic, which is okay to develop.
But why is it removed from the map then?
No, it, the, 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 uh. The one that is in the map is okay to develop. The, the, the street to street one is not okay to develop and the one on the corner, the Winchester Drug is not okay to develop. Or demolish, because the case may be.
So the one that cuts.
Certainly wouldn't be demolished. If they demolished that one on the corner, they would run into some issues. But that's okay. Um, so, so. The, the long one with the three, um, outlets to the roof is the one which has been excluded.
Right, that's historic. I mean, I mean, Carrie and I went through and we looked at these buildings in, in person.
Yes, I have as well.
And that's, I just wanted clarification on what the map was, the, if we go back to the purple or the red or wherever we were. I just wanted to clarify what buildings we were talking about. Thank you. That's very helpful. So.
Why don't we, so can we, can we ask the, the board whether this map in front of them is okay? And maybe we can get to a vote on it without further discussion?
On the whole map?
No, no, we're talking about the U shape plus the one.
Oh, okay, yeah. I, I mean, I, I mean, it, it still includes the Art Deco buildings, but, uh, I mean.
Built in the year nineteen hundred.
Because we could live with that.
I think Art Deco is more important than Victorian personally, but I think that Art Deco will, this building will survive and be properly reused.
So I would propose, should I make a motion, Dea?
Just.
Yes, yes, make the, make the motion.
Well, I wanted to hear what Carrie was saying. What were you saying?
Eighteen Park Street was built in nineteen hundred.
Right, good. Um, so I'm saying that we make an addition to our, um. CBD three A overlay district of these one, two, three, four, five properties in gray. That are on between park and, and church. And along Quill Rotary and I don't know how to define, define them by address, but somebody does.
Okay, so why don't we, why, I think we will take a snapshot of this and we'll fill in the addresses. It's getting late. It's already twenty. It's already nine forty. So we're gonna call this the, um. West of the Rotary Extension.
Park, Park Street Extension.
Park Elman Vine I have written down.
Fine, that's perfect.
Okay, so this is the extension. So we're gonna have a vote on this. Is there a second for that motion?
I, I'll second it just to get the conversation started, but I do wanna make some comments.
Okay, so we now have a second. This motion and this motion only is up for discussion. Go ahead, whoever wants to make comments.
I, I think that it's, it's. Our zoning is to zone for use, right? And I think it's, I think it's, um, a, a very different. Mindset to think that excluding it or including it somehow determines how that building is gonna be. So. Excluding that one building, which seems very, very suitable for housing, seems very odd to me.
They can still use it for housing, but I don't think it should be under this by right situation.
Really, Nick, you have a lot of time. Like, can you just be respectful?
All right, go ahead.
So I, I, I'm not comfortable with excluding that, but, you know. I, I just don't think that that argument is sound, that if you exclude it, you somehow. Protect the look of it. We're, we're, we're zoning for use here. So.
Would you amend the motion?
I do think that that building. To demolish and to do something else would be extremely hardy. Um, it, it's, it's of a type that is very suitable for housing. So I, I mean. Yeah, I would amend it because it, it actually raises more questions.
So is that a motion to amend to place?
The motion is to amend and to include that parcel.
It's called eighteen Park. Is that what it's called?
Eighteen to twenty or something?
Carrie had it.
Okay, so.
It's eighteen twenty.
Eighteen twenty.
Okay.
So. So we have a motion, we have the, a motion on the floor to add eighteen to twenty Park Street. Into this. Mini zone. Is there a second?
Was that eaching, was that your motion?
Yeah.
I second. Sorry, lost track.
Okay, so we have, now we have a chance to discuss the motion to amend. Which is to add eighteen to twenty Park Street to the overlay district.
So my. My.
Please.
So Taylor, do you know background on why this was taken out?
Uh, it was included in a list that you and Nick created, I believe.
Okay, so we took it out, but was it ever, was it discussed, Z Rock media? Has anyone else raised concerns about this parcel besides Nick and I?
Not to me, no.
And I mean the whole gray block. I don't just mean the cutout. I mean the whole gray block. This one.
Uh, several members of the Z Rack have expressed interest in retaining the look and feel of some of the buildings. On vines, where my cursor is, like where the. Where the bank is in here, but I actually have not heard anything to my recollection about anything along this street here.
Okay.
But that's just to me.
So sort of the stuff that faces the town common and the Rotary was sort of like, let's protect that. So we may as well take them out. Is that sort of the general?
Yeah, uh, yes, yes, that, for, for, for the people who favored the removal, um, yes.
Okay, so since we kind of straw poll all of the stuff, I think we got some good acres out of the amendment to add in the Shore Road. And I, I don't think this is a. I don't, I don't think because they are, I, I, they can still be housing. I don't think it's something that we should. I, I'm leaning against this little addition just because it's something that was, I think the Z Rack's been pretty thoughtful. Um, and I did, wasn't in on that discussion.
I should note that we didn't ask the Z Rack to go over individual parcels. So the fact that the Z Rack may not have opined on this is.
Yeah.
Probably because they just didn't, there wasn't the chance to do so.
Sure.
But, but it should be noted that a majority of the Z Rack did select a option which did not include this. So.
Yep.
Six, six, six of ten, but you are right. We didn't ask about individual parcels.
So any further discussions on the motion? Okay, then let's, let's take this to the vote. The vote is to add. Um, the parcel eighteen to twenty Park Street into the overlay district or into the gray zone, let's say.
And one, one more comment that then we're done. We don't, we don't need to think about Saint Mary's again because this would get us over all the lines, right?
You could.
I'm gonna have to do calculations very quickly.
Yeah, I think, I think you could certainly.
You want me to do the, you want me to do that quickly? It'll be pretty rough, but it'll be good enough, I think.
Great.
Yeah.
So we, we actually are on a motion to amend the original motion.
No, I know, I'm just, I just wanted to get that number going. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't know that the inclusion or exclusion of this particular parcel is really gonna shift. The, the denominator or the denominator much.
Right.
So. Do we wanna wait until Taylor does that calculation?
No, I think, I don't think for the amendment we need that. I think before we vote on this CBD area, we'll wanna know.
Okay, so why don't I go ahead with the vote on inclusion of eighteen to twenty on into the gray area? Um, I'll start at the bottom of my screen, eaching.
Hi.
Sally?
I.
And somebody just joined and everybody moved. Uh, Nick?
Nay.
And Carrie?
I'm gonna be a nay on this one.
Okay, and I'm going to be an I. So we have a, a three to two vote to include eighteen to twenty. And then Taylor, you're gonna do some updates on the.
Yeah, just give me a sec. So that would bring us to a total of thirty-one point eight acres.
And, and which, is that total across all districts?
That's total across. Um. That's total across all districts. Yes, including the two gray parcels that we just, that we just.
And how much do we have inside the station area?
Uh, can someone let? Who has host powers, let Michelle in, please.
I thought we just voted in the amendment. We didn't really vote for that whole area.
We have not voted for the area. We're just getting.
We have not voted the whole area, but Taylor was, Taylor was asked to do some calculations, so. Um, I'm not sure exactly what they are. I mean, I think. While you're figuring that out, why don't we go and vote on that gray area? Because I think Taylor included that in his.
It would put us at, it would put it, put us at eighteen point two acres inside. Of the transit station.
That does not include the, um, the north core area. So let us vote on this, the square blob. We're calling the Park Elm and Vine Extension. We're now back to the main motion as amended. We're now back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? Any further amendments? Shall we go to a vote?
Wait, we're voting on, didn't we just vote on that? What are we voting on?
We just voted on inclusion of eighteen to twenty in that gray area.
Okay.
Which, so we've amended the original motion, which Yicheng brought, which was to include the entirety of part, or to include Park Elm and Vine. Okay, so now we're back to that gray area. Um, any further discussion? If not, why don't I go directly to a vote? So Taylor, would you please bring that map up so people can see what they're voting on? Okay, so that's the gray area approximately in the center of your screen. Um, that's the area we're voting on now, uh, and do a roll call vote of, um, start with, uh, who's at the, uh, Carrie?
I'm a nay on this one.
You're a nay on this one? Okay, um, Yicheng.
Aye.
Okay, um, Nick.
Nay.
Sally.
Aye.
And I am an aye on that one as well. So that gray area comes into our overlay district. Okay, the last part of this plot, I believe, are the pink areas, the last part of this. And do we have any discussion as to?
Just the comic book building was the one building that, if we're adding back a bunch of these other buildings, I'd like to exclude that one, since we talked about excluding it. Other than that, I think it would get us there and I'd be comfortable with it.
Okay, so let us, um, can we get the address of that? Because I think we all know where the comic book building is. We just.
Uh, I got it. I, I got it here somewhere. Six twenty-six, or six twelve to six twenty-six Main.
Six, was that six twelve to six twenty-six?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is, I believe, what we're calling the North Core area. And so.
Back to the map.
There, great, thank you, Taylor.
Yeah, so I think that purple area is what we're calling the North Core area. Um, and with the exclusion of six twelve to six twenty-six Main Street, that would be the area we would be considering.
I could move that.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, what, what is this exclusion of six twelve to six twenty-six?
That's the, that's the building where it has the comic book store. It has.
The thing we just voted. Okay, I got it. Go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, so Nick, you were gonna.
So I, I could move the purple area with the exclusion of the comic book building.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
You mean with the exclusion of the comic book building?
Yeah.
With the exclusion of the comic book building.
Yeah, I would second that.
Okay, um, are there, is there any discussion?
Um, I, I just wanna say that it's a three-story building with a really front setback. You know, street front, you know, um, yeah, sorry. Detail at the bottom floor. It, it just feels really good. And I, I agree, it's a really nice feel, and I was hoping that that sort of, that kind of building type is what um, would become of downtown, is that it, it can rise up to three stories and still feel really good. And I just wanna note that that was what sort of
Yeah.
Sixteen to eighteen Mount Vernon Street was trying to do, um, that we, that this board voted down on, so.
I, I actually, I would like to, am I able to retract my second, Diab, with explanation?
Uh, you know, Robert's rules is, is complicated or as simple as you want it to be, I guess. How does the board feel about? Okay, so what we can do.
I'll replace your second. So if you're worried about sort of like, did you, I'll, I'll replace the second.
That's helpful. That's helpful. Thank you.
So where are we at? We're at a second for North Core with excluding six twelve to six twenty-six Main. So we do have a first and a second. We're now here ready for discussions, amendments, et cetera.
It does not affect significantly our numbers. It doesn't affect continuity, right? I'm just making sure. It's just this little cutout, right?
Yeah.
I think it doesn't, it doesn't affect continuity. Um, I, the state will tell us whether they consider this to be spot zoning or not, which I think is what they would accuse us of doing, but regardless, you know, that's any other further discussions or amendments?
Yeah, oh, yeah. I, I'm just really curious because it's, it's, again, it's, it's a, it's equivalent of keeping it in the, excluding it from the zoning is equivalent to saving a building, and I just don't think that that's a one-on-one argument there. So, um, that's all.
Um, but let's, um, can we go to, you know, one question for town council is, if we did exclude the one building, would that be considered something like spot zoning, or would that be acceptable?
So certainly it can be. I mean, the, the advantage you've got under three A is that three A is subject to so many levels of review before the Attorney General gets its hands on the, on the zoning by law that, um, likely you'd, you'd be aware of that before it was disapproved. Um, you know, spot zoning is always a challenging topic even outside of three A because, uh, if you review the forty years of case law involving spot zoning, um, you can, you can draw conclusions based upon the tendencies of the court. So for example, uh, the larger the spot, so to speak, the less likely it is to be found, uh, to be spot zoning, whereas the smaller the spot, the greater the odds it'll be considered spot zoning. Um, that's not an exact science by any means. Um, when I look at something like this and I see the, the parcel you're considering excerpting, you know, already the boundaries of this particular district are not. Um, we're not talking about a rectangular district or a square district or a circular district. They're already sort of irregular. So I don't have a significant spot zoning concern, but I do recognize it's a little bit of a gap tooth here in the middle of your district and somebody could look at that and say, you know, what's the rationale? And isn't that singling out a specific property for, uh, more onerous or, or less favorable treatment? And isn't that the very essence of spot zoning? So I could make the argument either way here. I think, um, if, if I had to, if I had to guess, is it or is it not? I would probably say it's not spot zoning. Um, but as, as somebody had said a bit earlier, maybe it was you, Mr. Chairman, the, the state will let us know and will likely know that well before something, um, you know, is, is put on the Attorney General's desk for approval.
Okay, thank you. I think that.
I think, I think that this three A really does incentivize developers. And I, I don't think that we should necessarily trust what they're gonna do.
Already housing, right? Like above.
It's already, it's already apartments. It's already apartments. We're not gonna get anything.
So let me.
Procedurally, we are gonna approve this map now. We're gonna work on our design review. We're gonna bring it to town meeting. We're gonna submit it to the state. Is there anywhere in there where any of this can change, or is this the last time? Like, like, what are, like, what if? What if?
We, we, we have. Okay, so our timeline is getting this to town council. Our earliest draft by the beginning of February, final draft by the end of February, so that there's enough time to review by the fifteenth. If the state, if the state comes down and says that our zoning is not compliant, then we will go back to town meeting. And.
But the state weighs in before town meeting?
No.
Okay.
The state, the state weighs in whenever it feels like, apparently. It has a lot of, it has not yet, at least according to our consultant Emily Innes, they have not yet reached a decision on any of the plans which have been approved.
Okay, so if we do some public outreach and people are absolutely incendiary that we included a building, can, we can revote before town meeting, or we can revote?
I don't think we have, we don't have the lead time for that.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just making sure.
What I want to, what I want to do though is just make sure that people understand that talking about individual buildings, um, the, the word, the, the, the concern is that we would propose something that would be an incendiary event at town meeting, that, that people would be really upset that we proposed that this, these lots, that land would over sometime in the next five to thirty-five years or beyond be eligible for multifamily housing with first-floor residential by right. And I don't think that, uh, any of these parcels right here, um, should be considered automatically that they're going to be torn down just because we're proposing them for that use. Um, every single parcel has its own merits and a developer is gonna look at it mindful of the market and the beauty of each structure and say, this is the best and highest use that he would put to it as long as it's within the confines of the development standards and, um, site plan review. So including and excluding properties is at a micro level helpful, but when you're talking about big blocks where they count in a major way towards our success, this is a, a very good model right here.
So are we ready for a vote?
Are, are we voting, we're voting on excluding? Or are we voting?
Yeah, the current motion.
We are voting, the motion was to include the North Core without six twelve to six twenty-six Main Street. It was first and, it was moved and seconded.
Right.
So, so this is what we're voting on, is the purple area minus six twelve to six twenty-six Main Street. Are we ready for that vote?
I'm ready.
Okay, so let's do it. Sally.
Aye.
Yicheng.
Nay.
Uh, Carrie.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Diab says nay. So we now have a three-two. This motion does not pass.
What do you mean it doesn't pass?
Sally, which way did you vote?
She said, she said yea.
Oh, then I am, I'm counting wrong.
No, you know what? When I was saying that, I thought we were voting on the image on the screen right now. I was forgetting that we're voting on whether to take out. I'm sorry, Nick, but I have to be truthful here. I was voting on whether we would approve the entire purple, forgetting that the motion on the table was to remove the comic book building, as it's called.
And I apologize, Nick, for mis, mishearing Sally's vote.
Understanding what the, what, what we were voting on.
Okay, so as I said, recovering from a migraine, my brain is mush. Let us go back. The motion is I think we have to call, I think we have to call another vote. The motion is North Core with the subtraction of six twelve to six twenty-six Main Street. So let's do that roll call again. My apologies, um.
And mine.
Whatever your name is now. Sally, Sally, there you are. How do you vote?
I vote no.
Okay, um, Yicheng?
Nay.
Um, Nick?
Yea, aye.
Aye, Carrie?
Aye.
And I vote nay. Okay, so we all know what we voted for and the counts are three nays and two yays.
So that means, Taylor, the map goes back to the purple.
It doesn't go, it goes back to, it goes back to empty, because we haven't voted on any of the purple yet.
Okay.
So, so we could, we could.
Why, why don't we just vote for the rest of it? If we're not gonna, you know, I, I think we're ready. It's, it's ten.
Yeah, I would put a motion on the table that the currently colored purple on our screen at this point in time, two hours and forty-eight minutes into the meeting, however you document this image, is what I am moving that we include as, um, part of our CBD MBTA three A overlay district.
Okay, so we have a motion to include all of the purple area, which we're calling the North Core area. Um, is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, so do we wish to discuss it? I'm sensing that no one wants to talk about this anymore. Okay, so let's go to a roll call vote. Uh, Nick?
Um, aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. So the only two, I think, parcels we have left, the, I, I think we're okay with the numbers now, Taylor. You can confirm that. But we still haven't come to a final decision on Gin Road and Saint Mary's. And maybe we should wait until, um, we see.
So here, here, here are the numbers with everything just voted. It's a total of forty-two point two-three acres. Twenty-three, twenty, twenty-nine point six-two of that being within half mile, sixteen point three, excuse me, thirteen point six-one being outside. This is in compliance.
Okay.
I, I thought that it had to be, oh, the fifty percent within the half mile uh, goal is what?
No, we met it. Forty-two, half of forty-two is twenty-one, so we're.
We need, we need eighteen point something, eighteen point three maybe, eighteen point. Okay, so we're good on those. So does the board wish to further discuss Gin Road and Saint Mary's?
I think that those are really good areas that the ZRAC brought to our attention, and they're really worthy of of thinking about. Um, I'm a little nervous that in town meeting, spring town meeting, representing MBTA three A as well as North Main Street zoning. And I think that these two areas are just a little bit outside. I think, you know, uh, Gin is the only district that is a single-family housing district, and I love the idea, and I think there might be a momentum for it. But I, I'm not sure that it's doable within this whole spring town meeting. Similarly to, um, with Saint Mary's, I would, I would, I'm a little bit concerned that, uh, it is um, like the Mahone's Bonnell um, district where it, it could be very usable for the town, um, if we can negotiate and, and figure out something with those areas. Not to say that I don't think that housing shouldn't be there, but within this whole package, it's, it's, it's a lot.
So, so just a a little clarification, when you say the town should negotiate, are you talking about? How would the town be able to negotiate?
Well, if, if say that school needs to be converted to a different use, um, that we would be able to somehow, you know, be able to have more say and control, um, if it were uh, multifamily by right right now. But it, it's such a large acreage, um, that one particular property, um, that it seems that it could be use, useful in other ways. And that we, if we put the overlay on it, it somehow diminishes that potential.
I like the idea of control, but wi- without the overlay.
Well, that's, since it is SCI, so in order to do anything with SCI other than, for instance, to put in housing, they would have to get the zoning changed, then keeping it as SCI does give the town more, a more say in how it's being developed. The, the question again is, is since we're not in compliance with the SHI with forty B, the other option is for someone to put in some sort of a forty B development. Um, it's a fairly small lot, so I don't know how many units would go in there. Um, possibly the same number of units that would go in there if it weren't a forty B. So those are the, those are the, I think that the options, if we don't go with an overlay district, those is the two ways this land could get developed.
So if we did put it over, as an overlay district, they could also use it as a forty B too, so it doesn't, it doesn't decrease that possibility.
That is correct. It does not decrease that possibility. Thank you. I had not considered that.
That's actually really.
That's actually really helpful to understand. Can you say that again, Yicheng, that if, if it, you say it?
Oh, it's, so it's, the zoning is SCI, so if anybody wanted to change it to housing, they would have to go through the town. And so in. Uh, but if we have it in the MBTA three eight. As it, as of right, multifamily housing, they, they, they could just change that use without. Going to, having more, um, control from the town of what happens there.
Right, so they could put a forty B in here even though it's SCI.
Either way, they can, that's true.
Right.
Yeah, even with or without being in the MBTA district.
Right.
So that does not provide any extra protection.
Right.
So. I'm, I'm, I've, I've heard from. Yicheng and Nick and anything from the other two members of the board as to whether they'd like to, how they want to handle this, this plot?
Um, I, I.
Well, can I say one thing, Carrie, that I thought this wasn't the final map that one of our Z-Rack members? And, oh, here, this one. Um, Tay- Taylor, can you introduce this image?
So this is just a second option based off of a few recommendations from Z-Rack members and other members of the board. Instead of moving across the street. To, uh, to the church and the general business one district. Let me move my screen, hold on. And the, the general, the GBD one. Right here, you stay along this side of the street. Moving into what is currently zoned, single family.
So, so, since we've sort of met, I mean, we have, I, I. My, my inclination is since we've met all, you know, if we sort of end up voting, yes, Saint Mary's should be part of three A, I'm gonna wanna go back over all the things that we can't revote on. So I'm inclined to sort of, you know, continue to strategize on what might happen when this, when this comes up for sale, but not included in this. I think we're already inviting lots of change under three A and I think this is another. This is sort of, I, I think leaving those properties to be flexible for now is probably smart politically, but also just sort of strategically for the town.
Okay, thank you. Sally?
You're asking, what do I think of as the merits of this, right?
I'm, I'm asking whether you believe we should, we should vote on Saint Mary's.
No, well, I don't mind if we vote, but I, um. I would vote no to its inclusion in the three A.
Okay, so I think the consensus is that we're not going to include Saint Mary's. So. We can go ahead and do that formally or just?
I think we should. Okay. So then, and the, the, the whole concept of Benel and.
So let's, so is there a motion on the floor to, to exclude Saint Mary's from our MBTA three A overlay districts?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And let's do a roll call vote. Um, Yicheng?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Um, then let's go on down to, um. Gin Road? Does someone want to make a motion, one way or the other?
I will say that I really liked this idea, but I can see that we've got the acres we need and it would be a political catastrophe. So I moved to not include Gin Road in the three A properties. Or whatever, three A.
Thank you. Is, is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, so any further discussion?
Again, I think it's such a great idea and I, I think that there is an appetite for it, that people are, that folks are really having a hard time. Finding places to downsize or to begin their households and there are too few. Um, smaller condos that, like this, that might be possible for, for folks to.
Yeah, I'm really compelled by the idea. I really love the idea of.
Can you? I haven't, I'm not done yet. Um, so I would, um, I would like to bring it up later. I hope, I hope the board brings it up later, but within this whole MTA. Um, as well as the North Main zoning. Package, I, I don't think that it's, it's, we have, we have done our legwork for it yet.
Okay. So, uh, any further discussion? Okay, are we ready for a vote? So, um, roll call vote, um, Nick?
Uh, what's the, what's the motion to?
The motion is to exclude this from our overlay district.
Uh, I'll say nay.
So that means you want it included?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Well, 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 modified, but with, with the exclusion of that one carriage house.
That's right.
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah.
Okay, so, um. We have a nay from Nick. Carrie?
No, I, I thought we were voting to, oh, exclude Gin. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
This, this, a, a yes vote, exclude skin, a no vote, include skin.
Okay.
So Carrie?
I to exclude, yes, I.
Aye, Sally?
I would exclude it, so I.
That's an I. Um, Yicheng?
I to exclude, hope to bring up later.
And I agree with. I vote I as well to exclude it. Um, so the other, other areas left are, that I recall are the ones along North Main Street. So it's the western part of the upper half of GBD two and all of GBD three. So. If you could scroll to those, please, Tyler, Taylor, my apologies. Okay, so.
And, and just to remind you, Diab, uh, the board will have to vote again on North Wedge Pond based off of seven point seven acres instead of six.
Are you sure we just do that now?
Okay, why don't we do that now? So it's a, um, we're going to vote on the inclusion. Of the two lots plus the, um. The park.
Excluded area.
Plus the excluded area. The two, the two lots on, um. Lake Street.
Bring up the map, Taylor.
Please bring up the map. Okay, so I'm gonna turn on the pretty colors.
Yeah.
So this is this green area in front of us. This is the North Wedge Pond District. Can I get a motion to approve? Or to include this district which measures. Seven point seven acres into our overlay district.
So moved.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote. Nick?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. Thank you very much. So if we can just scroll up this page, I think, Taylor, we can get to the other couple of. So we currently, the only areas that have been included are. The red and the green as well as in terms of the GBDs, we have not included. Do we, does the board want to vote to include any more districts?
I think we included the orange as well.
We did, we did not, did, I think, oh wait, we did, we did.
Four one, yeah.
We did.
We did. I apologize. I lost track.
So those, all of the districts that we just voted on, the orange, the green and the red, those constitute GBD two. And if we were to stop what we're doing now, the numbers, I believe, would allow us to not even have to discuss. The zones in GBD in, in what's currently called GBD three. Is that true?
Yeah.
That is correct. Do you currently comply with what your, what your decision has been so far? You currently comply. You do not have to add additional zones.
Right, right. Ha- having additional parcels outside of the half-mile radius also, doesn't that also can? Potentially.
At this point, it won't negatively affect you, but, but yes, if you choose to, to. Add in one of these or two of these, it's not gonna negatively affect your numbers, but. You are right.
If we need, if we wanted to have more acres, we could do the gray and that would be probably the least controversial.
Actually, that is one of the major commercial areas along that strip, so it would be very controversial. That's the problem.
Well, well, I mean, it's, it's just zoning.
Is any of it light industrial?
Um, at the moment, it's, there's no light industrial there, but that entire corner. And wrapping all the way down to Swatton is all first floor commercial.
Well, okay, all right, well, we probably don't, we don't need it at this point. I mean, I, I think we're, I think we're there.
Yeah, I mean, if, looking at this, I would, I would say that. You know, the purple might be more appropriate. If we were going to talk about it.
More like the townhouse model again.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm forgetting. That's all commercial up there and I think that's where we have to weigh whether, whether we want to, um. How we want to handle. The ability to put commercial on the first floor. So we don't, as has been pointing it out.
All right.
Already, we don't have to and we could actually. Leave it out now and discuss it later.
Yeah, I, I feel more comfortable just leaving it out. If we want to discuss it later. Uh, when it's not ten twenty, that also be helpful.
But, well, while we have met the thirty-seven acres, um. Minimum, I, I'm a little bit worried about the fifteen units per acre. Density, minimum, uh, median, I guess, mean. Uh, and so. I, I don't know how it works out now, but that, that's a discussion for later. But I, if we look at the full map of what we, like, brought in, I think, you know, the density that's gonna happen is probably gonna happen a lot higher at East One. And, um, Parkview, right? And then perhaps more north of the, of the CBD areas.
Well, the, the density at Parkview is already pretty high. I believe it's, it's thirty-seven or something like, or thirty-three.
If we wanted to keep, say, the orange across the street as a fairly low density or parts of the CBD as a very fairly low density, it, it, you know, if we, if we. Co-opted some of the other stuff, like the gray area where we could, um, have some high density stuff, then it could, it could sort of. Ease it a little bit, but I, I just don't know how it works out right now and I don't wanna spend more time tonight. Um, but that's, that's just one thing that I want to bookmark.
So we don't, why don't we, why don't we, uh, and Taylor, if you could make a note to see if you can get. Um, to introduce these, the new area or the areas as they stand in your models and see what sort of density we would need. Um, to achieve it. I think that's important. We were relying a lot on the high density that's already available in the CBD. So let's crunch those numbers and see what we need.
So, Diab, another consideration is, is that we, um, could. Be planning to zone for higher density in. The lower part of the green and in the red, that is within the half-mile radius. So, um, that was something that is coming before the planning board in the con- context of all the zoning that we need to write. The actual particulars, dimensions, density, stuff like that. And we were talking about making those areas higher density anyway. So that would be helpful to us.
Yes, no, I think, I think we need to. Yeah, I.
This one, we already have, already addressed some of those concerns. But we know that we, we meet it on the acreage and, um. It's hard to know if, oh, so there's the real crux of the question. If we're changing the main, the GBD two zoning. For what is red and green and even orange. In the same town meeting, but in a different article. Does the calculations of compliance and density? Get impacted if it passes or doesn't pass?
I think it would be, I mean, we are relying upon GBD rezoning to accommodate some of this.
So is that to say, and perhaps to counsel, that it's important that we conduct one of these. Two large project, put one before the town meeting before the second. In order for us to count these at the density that we're proposing.
So that's a political.
No, I think it's a legal question.
Well, we can certainly.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't.
So we're, we're, we're basing our calculations on density on, oh, we're not talking density tonight. That's right. We're just talking area.
I think the key thing that we need to get are, given the areas that we've selected. What are the requirements for density to get us to the popular, to the number of units? And so that's an unknown and I don't know that, and so as soon as we find.
Step in the process.
I believe it would be the next step, so why don't, I think that. We can discuss it more completely when we understand. What we have just, what the density requirements are.
So can I suggest that Taylor sometime, um. Uh, in the next day or two, get us the, the updated. Map and compliance analysis, and I know you need time to plug it into GIS. Plug the GIS into the actual compliance spreadsheet. So as much time as you believe that would take, that we could look at that. Before we figure out next steps. Or while.
I can definitely get you a new map in the next day or two. Getting more of the detailed compliance modeling is gonna take me more time. I will say that it is planned at this point. For our next, next week's in-person public meeting to have final density numbers of all selected zones. As well as proposed dimensional requirements. So. As of, as for next Wednesday, we will have. As much detail as we can possibly provide with the goal of collecting information from the planning board in the community to see how they want to change over the next few weeks.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Um, okay, um, I think we're done with this part of our meeting. Um, we do have a meeting next week where we're gonna be talking a little, we have a little bit of time towards the end of the meeting to talk about. Um, MBTA's North Main in terms of scheduling or whatever comes up. Maybe we'll be able to get some numbers by then and have a look at them, but. For now, I think, uh, I think we're done for the evening and I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Is there a second? Okay, so why don't we do a roll call vote? Nick?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Uh, Yicheng?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
I say aye as well, so, um. We will thank you again to, uh, is Nancy with us? Nancy's always with us. There you are, Nancy. Thanks to Nancy, our recording secretary. Uh, thanks to Adam Costa, Town Council for showing up. Uh, Brian Mantor, our Assistant Town Engineer. Um, thanks to all the members from the town. Well, thank you very much, Win Cam, for recording us. Thanks to all the members of the Z-Rack and other boards that I see with us this evening. And thanks to Taylor Herman, our town planner. We will see you all in a week. Have a glorious week. Um, oh, and thanks to everyone out in TV land. Ciao.
Good night, everybody.